All good to go?
Boom.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Marlon Lewis.
Eyes closed and heads bowed in reverence to his utmost his highest. Father, we come faithfully and humbly asking you to forgive us of all our sins, Lord God. Teach us how to lead, guide us how to govern, Lord God. Plead the blood of our city, Lord God, and your children, Lord God. We ask that you give us direction in dealing with gun violence in this country, in this state, in this city. Father God, I ask that you bless each and every family represented here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protim Ricky Goncalan.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott, here. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. We have any public comment cards?
No, sir.
Okay, having none, I'll take this opportunity to ask you to put your phone on vibrate or silent. And since we have no public comment cards, we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of May 3, 2022, which will publish on June 8, 2022.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Goncalan and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion of our minutes from May 3? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 2B.
Acceptance of the minutes of May 17, 2022, which will publish on June 10, 2022.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on our minutes of May 17? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Brad Calder of Calder, Slaven &amp; Company to present financial report for fiscal year ending October 31, 2021.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
We're going to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended October 31, 2021. Given 95-page report in front of you, for the sake of time, I'm not going to go over every page, obviously.
Thank you.
We're going to kind of hit the high spots. A few pages within the report, and then you should also have several exhibits. Does everyone have those exhibits?
Yes, sir.
That's good. So that's what we're going to do, a combination of the report and the exhibits, and we'll take care and cover everything. With that being said, why don't we flip to page 2 of the audit report? The opinion is spanned over three pages, pages 1 through 3 of the audit report. I'm not going to read it all to you. The pertinent part is really at the top of page 2, and it's a bold type that says opinions. Again, it's several sentences here, but what it's essentially saying is, we're issuing an unmodified or clean opinion. This is the best opinion we can give the CPAs. This is the opinion you've seen in prior years. This is the opinion you want to see when you have an audit done, and that's what you have this year. One thing that's a little different this year than last year is we do have four findings within the report, okay? Three internal control findings, one is a compliance finding. I had a chance to chat with Kevin, both in the ASIA conference, and I chatted with him again right before we had this meeting. All these findings are in the process of being resolved, or they are resolved. So I wanted to state that here. To me, there's no need to really go through them for the sake of time. If somebody has a question, I will, but in conversations with Kevin, they've either been resolved or in the process of being resolved. There's no questions about either the opinion or the findings. I'd like to move on to the utility fund.
So, quick question.
We have a question. Councilwoman Deidre.
Okay, so, yeah, so I noticed that there were three material weaknesses, is what you guys, I think you guys referred to them as. And so, does that mean that the ones that are here, and I guess this probably is for Kevin more than anyone else, the first couple of them, they've already been resolved, and we've kind of done what we need to do to be in compliance?
Yes, ma'am, are all of them?
Come on up, Kevin.
So we've either taken the actions to resolve them, or they are a work in process because it cannot be resolved overnight, and it's going to be a process over the next year that we have to follow. So all steps have been taken.
Okay, so is there a timeframe when we have to have this cured?
So...
Before the next audit.
He took your words out of mouth.
Well, ask the same question.
Okay.
Look at these and see, okay, are they resolved or not resolved when we're doing the audit next year? So if they're resolved next year, you'll see them again as a prior year finding, and the conclusion will be resolved. And that's what I hope to report.
Okay, and so have we identified a company that's going to be able to prepare these financial reports?
It's us.
It's them.
You guys are going to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And let me say this, that finding in particular, if you go through and look at most governments, very few do not have that finding. Very few governments have a person on staff that can put together a 95-page report that's, I don't want to say it's perfect, but I mean, we did our best to make it perfect.
Right.
And so that's a very common finding. I would say of the four you guys have, that one probably would be repeated. The other three should be resolved, and that's what Kevin and I spoke about before the meeting.
Okay, so basically, we have a year to resolve them. But it would be best if we do it now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't want it to compound on us. In other words, you know, we have other work to do. We know how much we've increased the budget with all of our projects and ARPA money and everything else, so we're working as hard as we can, as some of those things are just kicking up, to get us up to speed so that, you know, the longer you procrastinate, the harder it's going to be to go back and fix these things.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hi, Kevin.
So now, with that being said, why don't we take a look at the utility fund on page 79 in the audit report? And page 79 is essentially an income statement, and we have both years 2020 and 2021 in front of you. I'm going to kind of hit the high spots going through this, and then we have a couple of exhibits as well that pertain to the utility fund. So take a look at the revenues. You can see we have charges for services, and that consists of charges to customers as well as parish government, the cooperative agreement. And you look at the increase we had here. You have revenues of $5,070,000 last year. The increase by about $240,000 to $5,314,000 in the current year. So that's a good thing, an increase in those revenues. Looking at the expenses, this consists of cost of services rendered as well as depreciation. And look at how similar these are. $5,465,000 last year, decreased by $20,000 to $5,446,000 in the current year. So expenses extremely similar and under control, and that's really what you want to see, especially when you look at the way things are right now, rising prices, to have expenses be flat is a very commendable thing. And then you have the operating loss. $395,000 last year, it reduced, or the loss was reduced by approximately $260,000 to $132,000. So we're almost at a break-even point. I think that's what we're working towards, we're almost there. Maybe we stand here next year, we're there, but making progress year over year, which is great. Next section is the non-operating revenues and expenditures. You can see the various items listed. The biggest one is the interest expense and fiscal charges on the debt. It's approximately $230,000 this year versus $220,000 last year. And when you net them all together, there was a net expenditure last year in this section of $58,000, there's a net expenditure this year of approximately $74,000. And then the loss before contributions and transfers, a loss last year of $452,000. That loss did decrease to a loss of $206,000, essentially because of the reductions we talked about in the expenditures and the increase in revenues. You do have quite a bit of capital contributions, not quite as much as last year, $452,000. Last year was $2.1 million, and this is the sewer project you have with the Admiralty Parish Government. And then the change in net position, this has taken everything into consideration along with the capital contributions, a positive change of $246,000 this year, last year, a positive change of 1.07 million, mainly because of the capital contributions. Any questions on page 79?
So, do these exhibits go that actually...
Yes, ma'am.
...related to this?
Yes, ma'am.
So I just have one question. I was looking at exhibit 6, and I didn't have a whole lot of time to look at it because I got it when I got here, and so I apologize. But I was just kind of comparing City of New Iberia to City of Carncroft, and I guess this is more in the police, so maybe that's not the same one, that's sewer.
No, ma'am.
I'll wait to the next one.
You're actually taking my thunder here. That's actually the very last thing I'm going to go over.
Okay, well, I just realized.
He does go over all of these.
I'm going to touch every exhibit.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, I just didn't have a lot, but I wanted to ask that question, so I'll wait. I just realized it's not the same.
I promise I'm not going over it. If we could go to exhibit 1, and exhibit 1 is going to be a comparison to City of New Iberia Utility Fund over the previous four years. And it kind of just gives us some trends to look at on how we're doing and if we need to make any corrections or modifications. And on exhibit 1, you can see the approximate number of customers way back in 18, right at 11,700 customers. You've increased to almost 11,900 customers, so about 200 customer increase over this four-year span. The next line item is the income. So this would be the income to the city. Another way to look at it is the cost to the citizen, okay? So look at the trend that we have here. Back in 1837-74, it was the income to the city. Here in 2021, 3729. So that tells me, yeah, you've had some fluctuations in between, but we're flat on the income side over this four-year period. I am happy to report, however, that the operating expenses, when you take a look here, 2018, we were at $40.50, and they've trimmed it downward. We're all the way down to 3823. That's the lowest number on the page. Again, a good thing, but a surprising thing. If you'd asked me to predict, I would not have predicted that you'd had lower expenditures in a utility fund in 2021 than you would have in 18. Some of this is probably being fiscally responsible. Also, to be quite honest, some of it's luck. When things break, they're very expensive in the sewer system. If you get lucky and things don't break, you're going to have lower expenditures. And then we get to operating income or loss. You can see in your case, it's an operating loss for all four years. The good news is 2021 is the smallest loss on the page, and quite an improvement. When you look at it, 2020, 19, and 18, ranging from $260,000 to about $280,000 per customer per month, the issue was 94 cents. So quite an improvement at this line item. And then we do add back depreciation as a non-cash item to get to where from a cash perspective. So you're running about $15 for all four years in front of you, and so the bottom line is, we say operating income or loss without depreciation. Another way to look at it, what cash are we generating per customer per month? And this year, 1459, that's the highest on the page. So I would say this is, this is good news. There's no questions on exhibit 1. The next exhibit also pertains to utility.
Thank you, Vince. He's here, and he runs our sewer department, and this, in a good part, is, you know, due to him and his staff. Moving on.
Don't let it go down in 16 months now.
So exhibit 2, what we do here is, we take the City of New Iberia, and we provide a comparison to some other municipalities in Lafayette Parish. You can see that they're very in size. So, you know, New Iberia, 11,800 customers, Carncroft, 3,000, Lafayette, almost 47,000, City of Broussard, 4,000. So the number of customers is very different, but look at the income. $37 here in New Iberia, we just covered that, pretty comparable to Carncroft when it's $40. Lafayette's the highest on the page at 56, and then Broussard at 20, okay? That's obscenely low, and you can see it in a few minutes here, a few seconds. Then we get to operating expenditures. Look at how similar you guys are to Carncroft, 3823 versus 3990, okay? Lafayette's quite a bit higher, 52. And Broussard's in the ballpark at 43 compared to you and Carncroft. And then we get to operating income or loss. So New Iberia and Broussard both have losses. Broussard's at $23, you guys are at 94 cents. Carncroft has a little profit of 89, Lafayette's making almost $4. Then we add back depreciation for all the municipalities, and this I found interesting. You look at New Iberia, Carncroft, and Lafayette, all these variations between size, expenditures, income, but look at from a cash perspective where you are. 1459, very comparable to Carncroft at 1495, as well as Lafayette at 1421. So you have different income, different expenditures, everything going on, but when you boil it all down, what we do on cash per customer per month, very comparable with both Lafayette and Carncroft. Broussard is, they're trying to get to cash neutral, guys. I mean, they've been a ways behind. I mean, it's not for this meeting, but I wanted to just point out, when you have these variations, how similar Carncroft, Lafayette, and New Iberia are from a cash perspective. Any questions on anything within the utility fund?
Questions, comments?
If there's no questions, why don't we move on to exhibit 3? Exhibit 3 is the real meat and potatoes of the presentation. We have 95 pages that I set in front of you. Rather than going through probably 25 or 30 pages to get to it, we kind of boil it all down to this here, and this is essentially the operations, the netting, the income statement of the City of New Iberia. With that being said, let's get into it. You can see you have your final amended budget on the far left, then next to that is your actual audited numbers for the current year. The middle here is going to be your variance between your actual audited numbers and your final budget, and then we provide for comparisons, 2020, 19, and 18 actual numbers. And you can see the first item listed, added to the warm taxes, another way to look at it, property taxes. You budgeted $4.5 million, actually came in at $4.9 million, so $427,000 better than budgeted, but very similar to the previous three years. You can see it ranging between 4.5 and 4.7, did a little better than that this year, $4.9 million. The real star on the page from a revenue standpoint is sales taxes. You budgeted $18 million, which would have been the highest ever at 18, did quite a bit better than that at $19.1 million, which is outstanding, a million better than budgeted. I mean, I remember presenting last year with my father, $17.5 million was nothing to sneeze at, and that was a darn good number, and you guys beat that by 1.6 million. Comparing '20 to '21 increase, that's about a 9.5% increase year over year. It's really phenomenal. Look at where we were on sales taxes back in 2018, about 15.5. I mean, this allows you to do more to improve the infrastructure of the city, everything that other mayor's trying to do. These sales taxes are critical to doing that, and you guys have done a good job doing the sales tax, which is great. Next is franchise. You budgeted $1.5 million, did better than that at $1,765. I mean, that's pretty comparable, middle of the road, I would say, of the previous three years, ranging from about low water of $1.5 million, high of $1.9. So that's right in line. Intergovernmental, this is different types of revenues or grants coming from other governmental agencies. This year, we budgeted $4.4 million, actually came in at $4.4 million, we're right on budget right here, and you have variance here. Last year was almost $8 million, and the reason for the difference is, you had about $3.6 million of CARES money in 2020 that we didn't have this year, and that's the main reason for the difference between '20 and '21. Charges for services, the majority of this is your sewage fund we just went over, $5.4 million. You budgeted $4.1, did a lot better than that, but the $5.4 is pretty much in the middle of the road of the previous three years, $5.1, $5.5, $5.4. So right in line from a revenue standpoint, as you would expect based on what just went over. Fines and forfeits, budgeted $229, came in at $247,000, better than we thought, and that is extremely comparable. Last year was $244,000. The other years are not worth mentioning for comparability purposes because they worked four years of operations.
Right.
And then we get to miscellaneous. Budgeted $691, came in at $679, about $12,000 less than we thought. And you can see the previous years, $1.5 million, $1.9, and back in 18, $1.5. The main reason for the difference here is you guys were getting that garbage rebate, and you didn't get as big of a garbage rebate in 2021. That's pretty much the only reason for the decrease in this miscellaneous from 2020 to 2021. In total revenues, you budgeted almost $35 million, came in at $38,186, so you did $3.2 million better than budgeted, extremely conservative budget, and you can see that's, last year was $40 million, year before that, $35, year before that, $33. The main variation between probably this year and last year is some of that CARES Act money. Other than that, you've been at or higher than where you were last year. So good year from the revenue standpoint. Moving on to expenditures.
Fred, we've got a question.
Maybe it's for you, Freddie. Why are we, why are we budgeting $4.1 million in charges for services when we're averaging roughly above $5 million every year? Is there a reason for that?
I'd rather be low and make up that extra.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A million, I was curious why.
If you want to miss, you want to miss low on the revenues and high on the expenditures. Because we have at the bottom your variance, so your revenue variance at the very bottom of the page, second to last, 8.1%. It's a positive variance, though. So you can miss, as long as you miss where you have more than what you expected, there's no finding.
Okay.
If you miss the other way...
That's what I was asking.
You got a compliance finding, and you're saying...
I'd rather be conservative.
Right. So if you miss the other way, there is a find.
There's a compliance finding. Yes, sir. Absolutely. So you're not even close to that. I mean, it's an extremely conservative budget. If you think revenue's a conservative, wait till you get into expenditures.
Okay.
Because these are even more conservative. And let's get right into it. You can see general government administrative, you budgeted $4.2, you spent $3.3. So $861,000 underneath where you budgeted, but that $3.3 you spent this year, look how comparable it is to last year, $3.3 million. Looking at public safety, budgeted $12.8, spent $11.5, $1.3 million less than budgeted. But look at how comparable we are to the prior years, $11.1, $11.4, or, sorry, $12.6. So, again, conservative, that's where you want to be. Public works, budgeted $3.1, actually spent $2.3, and again, very similar to the previous three years on the page. Then we get to garbage, $4.2 million budgeted, look how much on the money we are here, though. $4.2 million, $4.2, $91 difference on this one, so right on the money here, and also comparable to the prior years.
We give out what we give in, and we have that contract that has the rebates and everything, so that's an easy one. That's going to go away, but anyway.
Well, I mean, it's right on the money for the budget this year.
That's been a blessing.
Culture and recreation, budgeted $1,030, a lot closer here, $934,000, $96,000 less than you thought, but the $934 is a little higher than it was in 2020, but lower than where they were in 2019, so good job there. Urban redevelopment and housing, budgeted $1.4 million, came in at right at $1.4 million, $87,000 under budget, but again, this $1.3, last year was $1.4, year before that, $1,030. So I would say a good job here on both the spending and the budgeting. Utility fund expenditures. For operations, we budgeted $5.3 million, that came in at $3.2 million, so extremely conservative there, but that $3.2 for operations is almost the same number as last year was $3.2, but it was about $3.5 back in 2019. And then we have depreciation broken out separately, just so you can see it, $2.2 million, $2.2 million, and that's about where you've been running for both, for 20, 2019 and 2018. Debt service, budgeted $2.2 million, came right at $2.2 million, a little bit less than that, and that is similar to the prior years. Interest and fiscal charges, budgeted $5.86, spent $7.26, so missed a mark a little bit here, and that $7.26 is higher than it was any of the previous years, probably the reason we missed a little bit on that one. Capital outlay, budgeted $4.5, came in at $2.9, $1,006 under budget. And you can see last year, it's been $4 million at this line item, $9.51 back in 19, and $2.7 back in 18. So total expenditures budgeted for the City of New Iberia, a shade under $42 million, okay? We actually spent $35 million. You budgeted about $7 million less than you spent, but that $35 million you spent, you spent $36.9 last year, $33 million the year before that. So I would say your expenditures are right, and look back at 18, $35.6. So they're where you expected to be and where they've been over the previous few years. And then we get to excess of deficiency. You budgeted to have a deficiency of almost $7 million. You actually have a surplus of $3.1 million. So happy to report that, that's a variance of $10 million, but that's a good variance. That's one that I'm happy to stand up here and say that we have. I mean, you can see how that compares to prior years. We had an excess last year of $3.2, year before that, $2.8, actually had a deficiency way back in 18 of $2.5. So we did a good job this year from a budget standpoint, we were conservative, very conservative.
And 17 was even worse.
But it's not on the pages, so what did you say?
Okay, thank you.
Then we get to other financing sources. The big thing here is looking at actuals, so you have the 15, this is the bonds, okay? See, you have $15.6 shown as coming in, and then $3.1 million showed as transferred to an escrow agent. The main thing I want to get to is really, what's the total other? It was $12.5 million of new bonds issued by the City of New Iberia during 2021. That's what I'm trying to get at here. We have to show it, just for governmental purposes, but it's $12.5 million of new bonds. We refunded some and issued some extras.
And that's the roads, right?
Yes, that's the roads. And this year, we'll have the pepper plex, which is $3 million.
Right.
And then if our voters grace us with no new tax, but a new way to look at things, a reallocation, we'll go for about another $10 million, and that will be next year.
So when you refinance refund bond, that's, that stays as a new bond in that fiscal year?
Yes, sir. And so one thing I want to point out before we keep on moving is, so we have the excess we went over of $3.1 million, and the $2.2 million of depreciation is from a cash perspective, we're positive cash here of about $5 million, a little bit more than $5 million. I just wanted to point that out because it's going to be important when I get to the thing I'm about to move on to next.
Okay.
So with that, is there any questions on exhibit 3?
So, quick question. I'm trying to get my dates straight. The $5 million we got from ARPA, is that included in here?
Well, we haven't spent it yet.
No.
I know, but that's incoming revenue.
The money's in an account, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, because that was 2021, correct? The first payment?
Yes, yes, so it's...
Okay, okay.
You're stealing my thunder again.
Yes.
Whatever's this, no, no. You're stepping on me on everything.
Again, you're ahead of the clock.
You're ahead of the game here.
I apologize.
I know.
I've been gone for a while, so I'm all excited to be back.
Y'all didn't spend.
She left for a month. Don't ever let her leave for longer than that.
So we don't pick it up as revenue here.
Okay.
We can't, if you didn't spend it just the way.
It's not even in that number.
Okay.
So it's not on this exhibit 3.
Okay.
The way that one is, that ARPA money is, you don't pick it up as revenue until you spend it.
Spend it, okay.
And you haven't spent any of it. As of October 31, 2021.
But it's in our bottom line.
But it, yeah, so it would be in our cash flow statement, would it be?
Again, you keep beating me to it, let's get there.
It's coming.
Let's go to page 65. Let's go to page 65.
Sorry.
It's only, won't be fun if there's ever a bad audit, so you can ask me. It's beating you up.
No, this is good. She beat me to it. And so on page 65...
Tell me about it.
Page 65, we have governmental business-type activities, and then we have a total. So I'm going to concentrate on that total for 2021 and the column next to it, the 2020 So, I'm going to concentrate on that total for two thousand twenty-one and the column next to it, the two thousand twenty total, so we can make some comparisons.
Okay.
The first thing I wanted to talk about is, looking at it, cash and interest-bearing deposits, or from twenty-seven million to fifty million. So, ultimately, I said, let me go ahead and give everybody a brief explanation as to why. So, twenty-seven million. So, we just touched on roughly twelve point five million dollars of new bonds. So, that's in net cash.
Okay.
Okay? Then we have, as I pointed out on exhibit three, that net income, from a cash perspective, about five point one, five point two million dollars. And then what I was going to get to, but you beat me there, is the ARPA money.
Okay.
So, when you combine all that together, comes out to roughly twenty-three million dollars. Okay?
Okay.
So, if you add twenty-seven and twenty-three, we get to the fifty million dollars that we are this year.
Wow.
So, that's where I was going to get to the ARPA, and I was saving it for here, because it, it helps me explain, because I'm thinking if I'm one of you guys, why did cash go from twenty-seven million to fifty million? I want to know that.
Yeah.
And those are the three, and again, there's other small riders, but those are the three big riders moving cash from twenty-seven million to fifty million. And the ARPA is about five point four million of that. If you'd like to know any further about it, if you move on toward the middle of the page, there's liabilities. You have overdraft accounts for you and you get to earn on revenue. All this is, and we must show it just for governmental purposes.
Okay.
Five point four million of us, that is your ARPA money.
Right.
And we have to show what is unearned.
Right.
It'll become earned as you spend it. It'll go into revenue and expenditure. Little funny, that's the way they make us do it, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a quick question while we're on this page.
Sure.
Why do we have one point five million, almost one point six million in overdraft?
Right, I can explain that as well.
Okay, cool.
So, what's happening here is, you have this consolidated cash.
Okay.
All the money the government goes into this consolidated cash. You have not actually overdrawn an account like if I would overdraw my personal checking account. It's not that.
Okay.
What happened is, you have consolidated cash and you wrote checks or paid money out of a fund that didn't have enough money in that fund to pay for that item. So, the city had the money, clearly, but that fund didn't have the item. And so, if we went into the balances of each particular fund of the city of New Iberia, you show some that have some overdrafts.
Okay.
And that's one of the findings in the report.
Yes.
If pertaining to overdrafts.
Yes.
Last year, we didn't put a finding, it was five seventy-five. It was a verbal, it's like, well, let's try and fix it. Now that it got to one point five million, that's where we elevated to finding in the report, because we felt like it was important that I said, okay, now, it, it needs to be addressed. And like the mayor talked about, trying to get things straight. You guys have so much money coming in from different sources.
Right.
It's not the easiest thing. And this consolidated cash, it's tough.
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, it's tough.
Look for more budget amendments in a quicker fashion. And look for things to be broken apart more and not all shoved in a big pile.
Right.
And the combination of those two things in plain English is going to, is going to fix that problem.
Okay, alright.
But to be clear, you, you have plenty of cash here. It's that one fund paid for something and that fund didn't have enough cash to pay for.
And I, I read that in the findings. I just, um, I wasn't sure that that was connected to it, so I just wanted to understand. Thank you for the explanation.
It's like the old Robin Peter to pay Paul.
You could say it that way.
Robin got a lot of money.
Exactly. I mean, it's a little bit of saying, but I'll, I'll go with that. I'll go with that. I didn't prepare to say it that way, but, uh, there's two, multiple ways. Let's see here, so we covered cash net spring deposits and the increase from twenty-seven million to fifty million.
Okay.
The rest of the items, to me, within total assets, they're pretty much comparable. I don't know if they're worth having a conversation about. If anybody sees something, I'm happy to discuss it. But in total, your assets went from a hundred and twenty-one million to a hundred and forty million. That main item that moved is the cash, as we talked about.
Right.
Then you have the foreign outflows of resources. This is a funny way we have to show us, kind of saying, which are prepaid items as it pertains to the pension that you guys have or pensions and the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. And then liabilities, we touched on the overdraft, you have accounts payable, accrued interest. Again, the unearned revenue is a point out earlier, this is the ARPA money, five point four million dollars. That's the ARPA money. I want to see you guys are due, Mayor, is it roughly ten point five million?
Yes, we have another check coming and we are waiting on the second check.
Yeah.
So, we'll see that number be even greater next year.
So, let's say you got all the money, ten point five.
We'll be spending, because projects are starting.
Yeah, it was, if you hadn't spent it, it would be ten point five when I say here next.
But projects are starting.
Yeah.
This is the highest, I feel this is the highest we're ever going to be. I, I believe that with the projects kicking off and the things that are happening, you'll see these numbers go down, but they need to. We've got to provide services.
That's the point.
That's the whole point of the place. I'm not a bank.
No.
So, it's coming.
To increase infrastructure.
Yep.
Uh, then you have long-term liabilities. This is the debt. So, you can look at portion due within one year, portion due more than one year, roughly thirty-seven million dollars, give or take. And then other post-employment, post-employment benefits payable, ten million this year is about nine point seven million last year. And then the net pension liability, thirteen point three million this year, twenty-two million last year. Again, these two items you have no control over. What I mean by that is, you have actuaries, they give us reports based on mortality tables, interest rates and various other items, and these move wildly. So, it's not like something changed in your net pension liability of what you're doing. The mortality tables, I believe, changed as well as interest rates, and it went down by quite a bit. This OPEB and net pension are going to be important in the next exhibit we go over. So, I'm going to be coming back to these, so just kind of keep those in the back of your mind.
Okay.
Then we get to net position, okay? This is, to me, the one of the more important parts, along with the cash, we talked about the most important parts of this page. You have the net investment in capital assets, sixty million this year, fifty-nine million last year. Okay? Then you have the various restrictions for capital projects, debt service, sales tax and other. The big one I want to concentrate on, the sales tax dedications, because these dedications, while they're there, there's quite a bit of, um, I would call it leeway for you to do different things. And so, when we're going to look at this next exhibit, I'm going to include those in what I'm going to call available net position.
Okay.
And then you have unrestricted, which is a deficit in this case, of eleven point three million and fifteen point six million. This is my transition into exhibit four. So, if everybody could go to exhibit four, this is where we're getting to, where we want to get to available net position and the days of operations of the city. So, take from page sixty-five, that unrestricted net position of eleven point three million, that's a deficit. And then we have for comparative purposes, both twenty and nineteen. It was a deficit of fifteen point six million last year, fourteen million and change, two thousand nineteen. I told you when we were looking at page sixty-five, remember that net pension liability and remember the OPEB liability? We add those back. These are very long-term items. To us, they need to be added back to get to an operations standpoint for the city. And then we also add back the sales tax dedication, because as I pointed out, while they're dedicated, there's quite a bit of leeway to use them for various items, running about thirteen million both this year and last year on the sales taxes. So, available net position, twenty-seven million this year versus twenty-three, almost twenty-four million last year and sixteen million back in two thousand nineteen, okay? Then we get to numbers, number two, the annual expenditures. This is coming off of exhibit three, okay? That, that annual expenditure, straight off of exhibit three, thirty-five million this year, thirty-six and change last year, thirty-three million and change in two thousand nineteen. We back out capital outlay. The reason we do that, we're trying to get to, what are you guys spending from an operations standpoint? Capital outlay varies wildly from year to year. Some years you have a lot, some years they have a little bit. But we're trying to get to operations. So, total expenditures, operating expenditures without capital outlay, thirty-two million this year, thirty-two million last year, thirty-two million in two thousand nineteen. That tells me it's very steady spending from an operations standpoint within the city of New Iberia, which is good. Average daily expenditures, running right in between eighty-eight and eighty-nine thousand dollars per day. Again, this is three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Okay.
Doing all that to get to what's the days of operations. So, to have sixty days of operations, which is recommended to have approximately sixty by the government, you need about five point two million dollars of available net position. You guys have, have a point out, have twenty-seven million dollars of available net position. So, the bottom, bottom line, what I'm trying to get to, days of operations, three hundred and eight days. Looking at roughly ten months. Again, the benchmark is to be two months or sixty days, you're at ten months or three hundred days. Last year, two sixty-six, two years ago, one hundred and eighty-six. I like the trend here. The mayor said, he said, be spending some of his money to improve the city. That's good, though. That's what you guys want to do and you have the capacity to do it.
Okay.
So, that's what the point of exhibit four is. Any questions on, just exhibit four and sixty-five, they go together. I mean, there's no exhibit four without page sixty-five. So, any questions about page sixty-five or exhibit four?
Questions, comments?
Good job.
Well, it's all of us.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're in great position.
Takes the whole team, you know, and everybody who works here, you know? We've got about two hundred and fifty employees and, uh, everybody's in this, you know?
The final two exhibits I have talk about, uh, some comparisons between the city of New Iberia and some other local municipalities from, I would say, kind of a cost standpoint from a sales and property tax on exhibit five and then as Didi wanted to talk about on exhibit six, the police. So, we'll, we'll end on exhibit six, but let's look at exhibit five. And this is a comparison of ad valorem and sales taxes. And you can see, we have city of New Iberia on the far left, we provide Carrin Crow again, Lafayette again, Youngsville and Bruceford. And you can see the sales tax rate, we're at two point five here in New Iberia. Carrin Crow is quite a bit higher than that at four point four five. Lafayette a little lower at two, Youngsville quite a bit higher at three point five, Bruceford also at three point five, okay? And you can see the revenue per person that that generates across the various municipalities. And then the ad valorem taxes. You can see we have it in New Iberia, Carrin Crow, Lafayette and Youngsville. Bruceford does not have it, but they have a healthy sales tax. What I want to really look at is that bottom line, when we add together the ad valorem and the sales tax, what are we generating from a revenue standpoint per person? And we're at eight hundred and seventeen dollars here in the city of New Iberia. It's essentially half of Carrin Crow, when you look at it. One thousand six sixty-five back over there in Carrin Crow. Lafayette's at about nine hundred and forty, so fairly comparable to Lafayette. Youngsville's quite a bit higher, one thousand one hundred and Bruceford at one thousand three hundred with no property tax. And so, you know, a way to look at this is, New Iberia should be an attractive place to come try and do business and grow because your sales taxes are, look at it, I mean, other than Lafayette, the lowest on the page is two point five percent and the property taxes are not bad either. So, it's a low-cost city to do business in. And that's kind of the point of pointing this out. Would you want to move it higher? Sure, I'm not saying you want to be low here, but there is an advantage of being low, so maybe you could get higher by attracting more people to do business.
Sounds like something we need to market.
Yes.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Yep, no, uh, we, uh, where were you a few years ago when we were passing the police tax? Because it was so funny, when we started that, people thought, I would go to meetings and people would say, we have the highest taxes in the KDN and I would pull out exactly what you and your dad put together and say, you know, it's actually opposite that. And it still is. I mean, we're still there, we're still, you know, we're just making it work with what we have and.
Use that argument on a road tax. You wrote, uh, Neil, same argument.
Good.
Another way to look at it is, people don't mind leaving New Iberia to go pay higher taxes than Carrin Crow or Bruceford. Or Youngsville.
That is a way to look at it.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, um, I think, I know in those cities, they have some other amenities. As we start to spend our money and start adding those amenities here.
Yep.
We need to market the fact that we have those amenities and now it's time for them to come back home.
That's right.
True.
We have the amenities with lower taxes.
Exactly.
That's right.
Yep, we're getting there. Thank you.
So, that's exhibit five. And then now, we're finally on exhibit six. I'll let you lead if you have a question.
No, no, you go ahead.
That was a good one.
Don't put me in that position.
So, we have New Iberia obviously on the far left. We also have Carrin Crow, Lafayette, Bruceford. We added Scott to this one, we didn't have Scott on the other, we add Scott here and of course, Youngsville. And you can see the police expenditures, it's six point five million. Only Lafayette's higher on the page at forty-one million. And again, that's because the population's so much higher. We then back out the fines that the, that the police department's bringing in, get to a police expenditures, net of revenues. We have the population all broken out. But really, when it gets down to you can make it comparable, what are we spending on police per person, per citizen? And that's how you can really compare, uh, different size municipalities. City of New Iberia is two hundred and eleven dollars, um, per person. And when you look at it, the only one lower is Youngsville at two hundred. And, um, so you, you have two ways to look at this, is that, you know, you have a very efficient spending within the police department or possibly you could spend more money on police. There's, there's two different sides to the coin. Uh, you can see Carrin Crow at two eighty-two, Lafayette three eighteen, Bruceford two hundred and forty-four and Scott right behind Lafayette at three hundred and twelve dollars. Now, it was kind of my comments here is that you guys do an efficient job of spending money on police.
Or we can spend a little more to provide additional whatever.
I mean, in the, in Mona's opening comments in his prayer, he talked about all the shootings and it's hard to not turn on the news and see these atrocities going on around the United States and wonder, you know, what's going to be next? It's kind of scary. So, I don't disagree with you that maybe spending a little bit more to make people safer.
And the police chief is in the corner nodding his head, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad you do more and more.
I'm sure there's a meeting coming for you, Freddie.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Um, so, I know you backed out the fines, but let's just look at that number. I mean, look at the fine number for city of Carrin Crow versus New Iberia. I mean, they're almost double. So, I mean, there's an opportunity there, because I see some folks that need to be fined every day.
Yes.
I, I'm serious, I mean, this is an opportunity to get some revenue to, to increase that number at the bottom. So, I don't know how we do it, but we're going to put it on the agenda for y'all meeting.
Well, we have it on the agenda to talk about speeding on our streets tonight.
I know, but I'm just, I was talking about your meeting with Todd.
Yeah, yeah.
With chief.
Believe me, we, the chief and I talk about this quite often.
It's just, it's an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
And to also get some control and we'll, we'll talk more about that, I know.
Yeah, I know we will.
It's just, it's on, in black and white. Y'all missed me, didn't y'all?
Agreed.
You make a good point, though. I mean, you look at the population at two forty-six, it, it's the lowest on the page.
Yeah.
It's the lowest on the page.
Exactly.
And, and Carrin Crow has the benefit of I forty-nine.
Right.
So, they're going to have an opportunity to write more tickets.
We, we don't have an interstate.
We got Amadel, Dale Street and Main Street.
I'm not saying we don't, I'm not saying we don't, but we'll save that for our conversation toward the end of the evening.
People are going to come back to our topic, we don't ticket them as much, right?
Yeah, taxes alone, we don't give you a lot of tickets.
Always two sides to the coin. Two sides to the coin.
Keep pumping those new businesses.
That's my presentation. If anybody has any question about something I covered or something I didn't, I'm happy to go over it. If not, I'd like to take this opportunity and thank the mayor, Kevin and his staff for helping us during the audit and thank this council and this body for allowing us to do business with you. And we look forward to doing business with y'all going forward into the future. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Questions, comments?
So, Brad, looking at the presentation, if you see the net position of the city and the amount of money that we could be investing in our community in the future, would it be a fair assumption to say that our sales taxes could possibly be on upward trend towards forward?
I would say yes. I would say yes. I mean, the other thing, component to it is, is everything gets more expensive. You would expect to see sales tax increase just as a product inflation. Now, that's not necessarily something I'm happy to say, but, but it's true. But yeah, as you were talking, more businesses and households, yeah, I would expect to see an increase, absolutely. At what rate? Your guess is probably better than mine, but, uh, yeah.
Nine point eight-five is pretty, pretty good rate increase over the last.
It's tough to be, I mean, you never know. Nine point five is a really, really good number. I've been presenting Carrin Crow about two or three weeks ago. I want to say theirs around thirty-three percent.
How much?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three percent.
Again, they had that Amazon facility come in, you have Walmart, they have some things going on there that you guys don't have. But again, you know, you have one big thing come in and you can see a spike and then there's things that follow. When one big thing comes, smaller things follow in it. All these raises the water in the entire city. So, you know, one of those things away from being maybe that thirty-three percent.
Pepper plex, that's why we bring bodies here to spend money.
Oh, well, we actually doing it the hard way. We have a hundred and seventy new businesses that have opened in the five and a half years that most of us have been together. But none of them have been huge. So, you know, we haven't had the luxury of getting that one big one yet. But believe it, we chasing it and we all know we want it, we need those jobs. But what we've done is increase it one pack at a time. And the first step was getting the police department, was addressing the crime, was getting a council that was proactive and saying, let's, let's invest, let's do some things, giving some incentives. So, we getting there, but we've done it, you know? I've watched other communities and I'm like, man, if I had the interstate, if we had, you know, you can't look at it that way. But we have done it to get to the percentage we are, one little, very small step at a time. And I think that that shows us it works, but until we get that one magic, you know, big, big Amazon or big player, we're just going to have to keep doing it the hard way, but, uh, we're, we're getting there.
Also, these are the hard ways, if I stand here again next year and it's nine point four, nine point five percent, y'all would be happy.
Oh, no.
That's fantastic.
Believe me, we.
We'd be crossing over twenty million, that'd be fantastic. So, if you get another year nine percent, I'd sign that today and take that.
Yes, sir. Agree.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? I just want to say thank you. Uh, it's, it's always a pleasure to work with y'all and, uh, you know, uh, your dad, Art, the, the whole team. So, appreciate what you do and, uh, we'll, we'll keep coming.
Thank y'all, thank y'all so much for the business, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, three B.
Renee Stansberry to address the council and present Smoke Free City Award.
Good evening.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. As she said, I'm Renee Stansberry, the Region Four Manager with the Louisiana Campaign for Tobacco-Free Living. And I'm here tonight to show our appreciation for the New Iberia Smoke Free Ordinance. All workers have the right to breathe clean air and now the Smoke Free Ordinance allows all New Iberia workers and visitors to be protected from the dangers of secondhand smoke. This has been something that many advocates in the community has worked for, for a long time, and now we can celebrate. This is an issue of public health and city leaders have heard the request of their community and made this a great city for all to enjoy. The map in front of you, um, as you see, New Iberia has, um, an asterisk now on the map because you've joined other smoke-free communities across the state. This map is shared statewide as well as national. And in fact, later this month, it's going to be shared at the National Conference on Tobacco and Health with other advocates across this nation who's working to do the same in their communities. As many of you know, I went around and conducted the implementation education to each of the businesses, and I have some packets here, I'll pass around when I'm finished, so you can see exactly what the businesses receive to let them know about the ordinance and how to comply with the ordinance. I did make it to most of the establishments, although I did have to mail a few, so they should have received them by now. And we also included just some other educational items that they can use as far as ink pen, bar towels, and bottle openers and things of that nature for them. I do have a few extra that I'm gonna leave here tonight with the city, so that way, if any future businesses come in, you can have the materials for them to use. I'd like to just recognize and say thank you to the mayor and to the council and present you with this award tonight because you took a step in protecting your community's health, and we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's very nice.
Yeah.
Really nice.
Do you want to forget a picture?
Okay, that's cool. Really, it should be the council members that work.
I've noticed.
It really should be everybody.
Yeah.
And especially the council members that, you know, support it, so y'all come on.
Are we all getting in?
I'll get in the picture.
Have we got you in it, Erin?
Okay.
No, you can hold.
You want me to hold it? Cause you're kind of, I ain't gonna sit. We voted for it, so why not?
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you so much.
She cried me out.
You should put all of y'all in the back, way in the back.
Thank you, Renee. Thanks for all your hard work and your dedication.
These are just the packets that you guys can see after you can pass it around. And Erin, I left the other ones right here for you.
How are things going with the parish? Oh, this is, I guess what they gave them, yeah. Give them to each one of the businesses.
Thank you.
I think that's okay, put on the next one, I need to expand that agenda. No, thank you. Jeff, we didn't put on our agenda to vote to accept the audit. And we, it's a misstep, we probably shouldn't. Do I expand the agenda to vote to accept the audit, or can it wait till the next meeting?
I think it ought to wait till the next meeting.
Okay, that way we can publicize.
We do have a restriction on which we ought to get rid of.
Yes.
That says if you expand, you can't adopt it.
Okay, so we'll have to do it at the next meeting. Okay, all right, but thank you for pointing that out, so we'll make sure that that's on the next agenda. Thank you.
It'll still be good next meeting.
Yeah, we'll still be good next meeting, yeah. I won't have spent all that money by the next meeting. Yeah, no, we're good. We'll remember, we'll get it done. I'll send you a copy. Thank you. All right, item four A.
Public hearing for ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twelve, amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia, amendment number three.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Yes, sir. Come on up, state your name and give us your comment. It's rare we get them. Come on up.
Richard Phillips, four twenty, East Main. Was this item published, the amendment, did I miss it as a, an announcement? Or how is the public supposed to know what's in amendment three?
I'll let our clerk answer.
The ordinances run by title, and if you want to view the whole thing, you can come in and view it.
Okay, well, coming into this meeting, I didn't know that item three, amendment three, was gonna be here. They don't, you don't tell us what's gonna be in the next meeting.
Right, it ran in the paper. It was published in the paper beforehand.
The whole amendment?
By title.
Okay, so I missed it, thank you. That was my question.
Okay.
Is there a chance you could give me bullet points as to what the major amendment is about?
Yes, sir. Basically, it's a sewer project, and we added a sewer project, and there was some money we allocated to base from the actuator project, which is a project that's required at the sewer plant, to base in D, which is another project, both of those concerning sewer. But anytime we make any change, we're gonna be bringing it back. We get audited on this, we are responsible to the federal government. All of the main meat and potatoes of the plan hasn't changed at all. But I can tell you, as we go along, if some things are lucky, come in with less money, that we spend less, then we'll make another project. There, you'll see another amendment. So our vice versa, if things go over. But this will be kind of a living document because we gotta live by this for four years, and at the end of four years, we get audited. We have to meet tons of federal procurement regulations, we have, I mean, there's, you know, imagine doing your taxes when you're gonna pay the government money. When the government gives you money, imagine how much paperwork you gotta do. So we're bound by all of these federal regulations, and I want a clean audit at the end because I don't want to pay the money back. So that was the only change, and I can't say this will be the last time because this is kind of a living, breathing thing as we go through with this ten million dollars, ten point four million, actually. So that was our change. Thank you for asking. Anybody else? Seeing and hearing no other public comment, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and I think Councilwoman Dustin Swer got this one. Thank you. Now we go on to item five A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twelve, amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia, amendment number three.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by, I think it was, Councilwoman Deedee Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none, I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-thirteen, approving contract for general engineering services between the City of New Iberia and Domain Zabo and Associates, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith, and to set for public hearing on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, do you have a second? Councilman Marlon Lewis, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Six B.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-fourteen, approving negotiation of cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Iberia and the town of Berwick for use of their town jail to house detainees that cannot be incarcerated in the Iberia Parish Jail, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith, and to set for public hearing on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
So.
If we have to put a prisoner on ice, if he, he's, for some reason, needs to be isolated from the jail that we go to, which is our parish jail with the sheriff, we have a contract, this gives us another location. If we needed to, let's just say we had to arrest and detain a police officer. Well, they don't want to go in the general population of the parish jail, so they, we have a separate contract or we'll have with Berwick where we could have someone go, they'd be safe, and they would be isolated. So we didn't have that before, and realized that was something that we wanted, so, and other communities are doing the same thing, have done the same thing with. Actually, our sheriff's department has one with Berwick. So Berwick has a unique situation that they house officers if one has to be arrested or, you know, informants, those kind of things.
Okay. Is it thirty dollars a day or sixteen dollars a day?
It is sixteen dollars a day.
Okay. It says thirty.
It says thirty, and then in parentheses sixteen.
Then it says sixteen.
I was asking the same question.
Yeah, well, it's sixteen.
Okay.
Yes.
This wouldn't include juveniles, would it?
No, juveniles are two hundred dollars a day plus, and they go to a couple of facilities that we, it's always tough to find a place for them. We don't have one in our parish, and I wish we did, but this is only for basically police officers that, you know, would have to be arrested.
Okay.
And we only pay a fee if there's someone that we need housed.
Correct, just like at the jail we operate now, coin-operated. If you got a prisoner, you pay so much a day.
Okay, thank you.
But we need to have this just to have a cooperative endeavor agreement. It's the right thing to do.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Just police officers?
Yeah, I mean, there could be an instance where we had somebody else, but I kind of think that they isolate people at the jail. We really want this for, if it has to be a police officer.
Not, not none of us.
No, that's, that is not any of us.
Play on getting arrested, Marlon.
I don't know where they're gonna put us.
Recently arrested a police officer for another jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And putting them in general population because they're from the Acadian area is very, we need to find a spot where they can't go in general population. And Berwick offers the facility there to hold, and they're away from any general population. And to achieve, it's half the cost of going through.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of trying to think about, I was gonna say that, but we, we pay double that in our normal contract. So Berwick has a really good price, we'll keep it that way. And it was because we, it wasn't one of our police officers, but it was another agency's police officer that we had to arrest.
Yeah.
Anything further? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, seven A.
Resolution twenty-two-dash-one-seventeen, accepting proposal from Pelicans Waste and Debris for Disaster Recovery Services and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts and documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Any discussion on this item?
So it's a two-year contract?
Yes. Well, I bid it out every year, though. No, it's two years, it's two years, it's two years. And they had the cheapest price, and they're already working on our community, so worked out well.
Okay.
On a pretty good job.
Yep.
I just have concerns about that because
Ma'am?
in the past, we used to have certain days that the waste would, would be picked up, and now it's
Oh, no, this is, this is our, this is our hurricane.
Yeah, this hurricane, but she's just talking about Pelican, too.
I'm, I'm just talking about Pelican in general. No, I'm not.
What you saying, are they not operating?
I'm just saying it's completely different from what we had in the past.
Oh, it's different?
Yes.
Okay.
It's different. So I just have some concerns about that.
Okay.
So are we talking about that now, or are we gonna talk about it at a different time?
A whole different time. I can tell you that, I'll give you the rundown, okay? On the hurricane cleanup, we had Gardens who was local, and we was sprawled to death. Okay, Garden was out, and the winds would be sixty miles an hour, and my officers weren't even back on the road, and he was picking stuff up. And my phone was ringing, and he was calling John to go out and do things in the hurricane, okay? So Garden was a special animal, and if you know Garden, he is, okay? They only made one of him. We don't have him anymore, okay? So my first thing was hurricane season's here, we had re-up Bayrod Habits. They had been on it and been competitive on the monitoring. So my first goal was, I gotta get my people in place for this. So I am happy that Pelicans is working here and, you know, is local and has people on the ground here already, and I find, does a good job. Put that aside, because that's what we're voting on tonight. Let's talk just for a second about the bigger picture. We are actually about to bid out, I am in the process of putting my, my proposal, my call for bids together right now to renegotiate the whole contract. And so that's gonna be coming, and I am putting a proposal together. And I do expect that whoever gets it, there'll be some changes in how we pick up. We, we inherited a contract from Republic. We inherited a contract from Gardens at the time, not the hurricane, but the debris removal, the regular yard waste. And then he changed that contract before we got here, and so we kind of had an amended contract. It was less days and this and that, because originally it was every week at one time. Then he quit, and so we had to put it out and find somebody, and look, Pelicans stepped up. We got it at a good price, we got it at a better price, but I knew that that was a holdover until I could set up to renegotiate the whole thing. So now we're going out for proposals, and, you know, we'll see how we get bids and how they come in. But I do expect that we will put something in there, it's how much you want to pay. In other words, we, we're gonna make some decisions as we do this because it's all money-driven. But, you know, if we wanted to go back to once a week, we could. If we wanted to leave it every two weeks as it is now, or, you know, we, we could. But we'll have a discussion about that as we put out the proposal. Or I might ask for it in quite a few different ways, and then we'll have a shopping list. But I don't want to, you know, preclude anybody from bidding on it, and I feel, I know you have some concerns, but, you know, I feel Pelicans is, is doing a good job. If I call and I have an issue, or I have, I don't want to say a special case, but sometimes they are, they have been more than accommodating. Tommy is going out there. We have picked up things that I didn't think they had to pick up, that when I would make the call and say, hey, can you go look at this? Or it's a one-time thing. Our biggest problem is always gonna be trees, and the fact that people cut trees down themselves and pile them up, but don't cut them small enough. And the even bigger problem is that tree contractors come and cut trees down and don't listen and don't haul them off like they're supposed to. And then you got a homeowner who's been ripped off because that person should have hauled them off. I can't tell how many times that Pelicans has stepped up, and Tommy's gone out there himself and had to go three times to some people, cut it smaller, and then I'll pick it up. So I, I do think they cooperate. I think the way we have our system set up is, is different, to take it for truth. So I think we'll have an opportunity to rectify that as we bid out and go out for these proposals.
Would it be possible for us to see kind of like the criteria you're gonna put as far as the contract? Like what's gonna be in there that they, they're gonna need to be able to perform these services in order to, you know, bid on the contract? I mean, because I think we all have different experiences. I've seen both sides of Pelican. I've gotten more complaints than I've ever had, well, in my year and a half, so that's not a long time. But I've also had them go out and do some special things for me, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
So it just, sometimes it's confused.
I'm gonna make sure that I give you a shopping list.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, as I put my proposal together, because I picked the professional services in the end, y'all ratified.
Right.
But what my plan is, I think that I wanna, as we do everything, as a group decision, I'm gonna give you a shopping list with a whole bunch of, you know, if we do this every week, if we do recycling the way we do now, this is what it'll cost. Here, here's what we guesstimate our participation is. If we do, let's just say, wild idea, we set up two or three places to bring recycling, and we didn't pick it up at the house, okay? Well, that would be way cheaper, and, and I'll give you that option. When I give you that option, we might be able to say, okay, we're gonna save money there, but let's give it back and pick up the limbs and everything every week. Then we'll give you that. So I, I plan on coming because I get the same calls y'all do, and they end up on my desk to try to fix many instances. And I think that there is some cookbook formula that we haven't quite, you know, fleshed out yet. And so I plan on bringing you a bunch of options and saying, here, here's, you know, how much money do you want to spend? Now, what we won't have, that we've had the luxury, when, when he was talking about our audit and saying, look at how close your garbage is, we all know we had a contract for ten years that whatever the tax brought in is what we paid him. And we had a rebate that adjusted it back and forth, but we never spent more than the tax. That's gonna go away. No one wants that contract. We'll never get that again. When it was done many years ago, taxes were up so much, revenue was up, Republic was here and making money. So when they were making money, they didn't want to lose that contract. So they agreed to sign that because they were making a killing. It was a different time. Then as the contract went and the economy crashed, well, then they threatened to sue me quite often to get out of it. I wouldn't let them out of it. We would have meetings, they would come with their accountant and, and bang on Kevin and try to get every nickel that maybe we weren't giving them, the rebate wasn't calculated. They tried everything because they weren't making any money. Nobody wants something once it turns into a dog. Well, it turned into a dog. So no one's gonna sign that again. I realize what we're doing is we're going back to like every other community and just getting a price. Well, knowing that, I want to give you all as many choices because as usual, we all in this together. So I'm gonna give y'all a shopping list with a bunch of different choices, and I think that that's where we address your concerns. That's where we say, okay, well, yeah, I've had a bunch of calls because it's sitting too long, okay? Well, then that's a way to, to speed it up, but it's gonna cost money. Or, you know, my people love recycling, or some people don't recycle, or there's too much trash in the recycling, or I see the recycle truck picking up the same waste as the, in the same truck, I mean, I get all the same calls y'all do. So I will bring you a recommendation and a big old shopping list. But what I, I clearly know is I need to come up with as many variables as I can so y'all can help me write the plan. If that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Shouldn't this begin July first? If Gordon's goes through June thirtieth?
I have to double check the dates, Jeff.
Okay.
It says June thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah. Because Gardens, you know, if we get a, you're talking about for this contract, if we get a hurricane, Garden's not coming cleaning up.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be Pelicans.
Well, let's make it July, let's make it today.
I think we should.
I can double check.
Then you have under two years.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I know, because of our, it has to be under two years because of our charter. Twenty-three months is the longest we can go, because Jeff and I did that years ago. And it haunts me every meeting, but anyway.
Thank you, William Cobb.
Thank you, William Cobb. You're right about that.
Just one more comment?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
About the waste, we used to pick it up like on a certain day for the week, every other week. Now it's whenever doing that every other week, and then sometimes it, it skips a week for some reason. Some kind of way the month comes in.
Gordon had a dead week, too.
Yep.
He did, he did. I didn't like it because so many people would call me, but
I'm just saying, the dead week kind of messes things up in people's cycle, especially when it's not on a, a certain date, too. So.
No, I never have liked the dead week, but, but we had that with Gordon, too, and that is something I would like to eliminate some kind of way that it's every, if it's gonna be every two weeks, it's every two weeks no matter what, because that, that's when I get the most calls because that extra week kills their grass, it's been sitting out there, you know, I gotta function next week. Now it's been out there for two weeks. I, I, I know that's kind of an issue. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anybody else?
So I'm gonna, since this, this resolution was publicly, public, I have to make a substitute motion to make this proposal effective June sixth, twenty, June seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
She's, she's checking.
Or you just gonna have to change the date.
Well, I don't know. Let's see what the date is first.
I'm looking at it right here.
If it's not correct, we're gonna change it, we're gonna amend.
It can't really be effective before today.
Two years from the execution date of the contract, and the execution date of the contract was June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Okay. So the motion's been made to do this, so we need.
Yeah, exactly. You got thirty days or twenty-eight days.
Yeah, let me finish the discussion, and then we'll go into that, but help me with the housekeeping.
No, I was, I was no comment since everybody else did. I, I got a good relationship with Pelican, and I know one thing that really, it's like garbage, it's kind of like the police department. It's given tape. If you don't let us know, we can't help you. So what I see is a lot of people, it never fails, they will put their garbage in their debris, their debris out the day after Pelican's passed. It never fails.
We have.
So we gotta, it never fails. I'm like, they just passed yesterday.
Yep, agreed. Agreed. Anybody else?
Maybe as we kind of talk about this the next time around, or whenever it comes on the agenda, we need to be clear with the public on what they will and will not pick up.
The public needs to know.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's a problem as well. They pick the things that they're supposed to, then there's still a lot of junk, and so people are calling me saying, why is this stuff still sitting here?
And look, education needs to be part of it. When the first Republic contract came, but things were fattening, Republic would put up like twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, so we hired a recycling coordinator, and Jerry Frederick was our recycling coordinator through the Republic contract, and she got our participation up to like thirty-three percent. It's probably eighteen percent now, but, you know, public awareness, and she did little events at schools, and she came to meetings, and she reported, and she chartered it and grafted, like some stuff we were talking about this morning.
Right.
The more you keep track of something, the better off you're gonna succeed at it. Again, it's how much money we want to spend. And, but I agree with you that some public education on what we have going would be, you know, helpful. And look, they call our office constantly, our secretary, you know, it's Amber now, the receptionist, she's constantly telling them, no, ma'am. I hear all day long, no, ma'am, it was yesterday, or yes, ma'am, they pick it up next week, and, and giving them dates. And people regularly call, you know, for those dates. So the more we could get that out there, the better off we would all be. Definitely.
Now, the items that they pick up are still listed on the city's website, right?
Yes, they are.
That's usually where I get the list from.
And, and the pickup dates.
I'll try to post it on social media to help out, because that's where people look. Yeah, and the calendar, too, I think is also there.
But we don't just say, go look, because some people aren't computer literate, some people, so
Yeah, that's a problem.
We can't just say, go to the website, because they might not be able to. So Amber tells them exactly what the days are, you know.
Oh, yeah, but there's a long list, and I can agree with the inconsistency of what day of the week they do pass. I guess, I don't know, they're shorthanded sometimes and fall behind, or if we just have more junk than normal some weeks, I don't know. But it used to be Mondays for us, and now it's just from Monday to Wednesday. But, um, it used to be Mondays for us and now it's just from Monday to Wednesday.
In fairness to Pelicans, we didn't pick a date.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we, we did not.
They don't have a date.
They don't have a date.
It's just they start, you know, on this side of the track, it's just a certain time and.
Like in my house, they pick it up pretty much the same time.
Okay.
But I do have other people calling saying, well, it wasn't, I thought it'd be Tuesday, it was Wednesday, you know, but it's always in that week.
Yeah.
So maybe when we do the new contract, we might have to just pin down a, you know, a better schedule.
Everybody, everybody got an iPhone, it's on the app.
Not everybody has an iPhone, Ricky.
Smartphone.
Not even almost everybody because older people.
Yeah, older people don't have that. They have flip phones.
Flip phone can't do that.
Exactly. My dad has a flip phone, so, yeah.
But knowing the day, a, a specific day for trash picking would be.
That's difficult. I think that that's an easy.
We used to have that and then.
That's an easy fix.
And then it changed to any day this week.
But again, when Gordon's left, you know, it, it, I'm not blaming my provider, we just didn't set a date. We didn't set it, you know, what day of the week. But, uh, I'll make sure we do this time.
And maybe we communicate radio, newspaper, this is where they're going to be this week or whatever. Just so that could, we have people who have, you know, we have to communicate so many different ways to make sure that they know.
Okay. And sometimes they'll still get it wrong and still put it out the next, the day after.
It's not going to solve all our problems.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, well, Ricky, what do you housekeep? That's what, uh.
I make a substitute motion that determines this agreement to be effective June 8th, 2022 to May 31st, 2024.
So are we terminating early? No, it would actually be June, uh, July 1st.
Could be June 1st.
Be July 1st.
I was thinking June 7th, that's today.
Today.
When we adopted, so.
Yeah.
Okay, then June 7th is fine.
Yeah. Okay.
But you have to wait after we adopt it, but it's now.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to amend. I have a second motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsal. Thanks for that. And this. And the second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Okay, so this is to vote on the substitute motion. So if you don't mind, please vote your machines. Thank you. Now we're back to voting on the motion because now we have a new motion. So I would need a, uh, I need a motion.
Move.
You want to read the new motion? Do we have to? We're good? Okay, then I need a motion. I have a motion by Councilman Dustin Swier. And a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this new motion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Good, good. And we have a representative, uh, Mr. Tommy T. from Pelicans here. Uh, let's hope we don't need this contract, but, uh, if we do, you're in place. Thank you. All right, 7B.
Resolution 22 dash 118, accepting change order number one for the MLK Community Center in West End Park Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts and documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Any discussion on this item?
That's, what is this for, Freddie, the mural and?
Uh huh. These are the changes that the money you had left.
Okay, the money we had left from your day.
Painting that lobby.
Correct.
The mural stuck going so that the artist has a good prep surface. Got a credit on a door that actually was still there, that was covered up with that plywood. And, uh, that other item we had was to, uh, paint the kitchen.
Yep.
Right.
Cabinets and that little closet in there, so it's the balance of your, your $100,000.
And this is all work we thought we could take the chance and do before the new roof is done. Although that contract's led and that is coming and, and we're working on it, but this finished off your $100,000. And then gives us a clear picture. We are meeting later this week and we're actually doing a little mini master study, I'll call it, just about West End Park. We're doing another about Bank Park because between ARPA funds, between capital outlay money, that's on the, that's coming, between our budget in November, we really want to look at, you know, what are we going to do next? Um, because we do plan, as you and I talk about often, uh, all of us really, we have more improvements coming in the center. Uh, but this, this was a great way to kick it off. Any other questions or comments?
Who's painting the mural? Y'all know?
Uh, yes, got an artist named Jimmy Rink. If you're on Hopkins Street and you look at the old Comptons and you look at the mural that's there, he painted that one. He painted, he might have done the one of the steamboat pavilion as well. Um, but he's done work all around Acadia, does really good work. We met with him out there and, uh, he had some really good ideas. He's actually putting together a little concept for us right now.
Okay.
So should be neat.
Very cool. Thank you.
Yeah, the mural is supposed to be about 34 by 12 or so.
Yes, it's big.
Nice.
It'll take the whole back of the, the whole backstage. And we're spending the extra money to apply. He could have painted on the CMU, but all those lines distract from it very greatly. So we'll plaster the whole thing first and then paint it as you do a real mural on fresh plaster. So I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's going to be nice. Very nice.
Cool. Well, if there's no other discussion, uh, please vote your machines.
Have a big unveiling, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Yeah, well, you know, a little groundbreaking, like the way we doing, the way we did the kayak dock one. I can tell you that every project coming, that's what I want to do. We're going to get a little band, we're going to get, you know, I bought the beer, city can't buy beer. But, uh, we will continue to have these little ribbon cutting events because I think it's fun to get the community involved and, you know.
That was cool.
Good. Thank y'all very much on that one. Uh, 7C.
Resolution 22 dash 119, awarding contract to Francis Heart and Cultural Services for the American Rescue Plan Act Project entitled West End Park Splash Pad Expansion and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
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 Second.
Councilwoman Marla Lewis and I think Mr. Broussard beat you on that one. Councilman David Broussard. Any discussion on this item? Hang on, everybody's trying to.
I always give you a little praise.
Okay, Mr. Broussard.
You took your swimming pool away, but you're going to add something a little bit towards, make up on that. So I appreciate you pulling in.
Hanging in there, pushing this forward.
Your district want to give you praise on that. So if you need a little help, that swimming pool be a missing.
Good job.
We're giving something to do in the summer.
I appreciate it. And as the mayor says, we all, we all did it together.
You know that.
We all did it together.
Councilwoman Lewis, I'll call on you.
No, I was saying, I, what I want to know is about when it's going to be complete.
We're going to start the project, we letting the contract now, so we're locking into price. They can order all their equipment, get everything coming. And then we thought we would let the kids use it for June and July. They go back to school right at the beginning of August, which is, they almost have, they have two months of summer, which is crazy. But anyway, so we'll kick off the project in August. And the rendering's up, you can see what we're doing. It's big, it's, you know, it's going to really finish off what we promised. When we did the small one last term with really no money, we all promised, hey, we're coming back and we will find a way to make it legit. You know, to make it something that really we can be proud of and I, I think, I think we are.
Yeah.
I like that green space. I mean, that, that almost looked like our park a little bit. We got cypress trees in our, yeah, in our park, huh?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So it's about, uh, 12 features, 12 above ground features.
That's awesome.
And a few additional water features. So you can kind of see where the original pad is. This is, it's the darker circular one. And so we're adding on sort of in a bean shape, uh, on one side and the other.
So we adding on on both sides?
Kind of, yes, yes. Give us some more concrete area and then allow for some really good above ground features.
Yeah, it's going to be nice.
Oh, yeah.
Can we get this rendering put on, some sort of poster put out there somewhere?
I'm doing that. Well, we, David and I have been kind of talking and Paul about doing that with, uh, all of our projects.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's, uh, that's something we meet on Thursday, among other things. But yes, you will see that.
Yeah.
I think it's good to show the community what's coming.
Absolutely. They'll be excited about that.
And, and people will never understand how long these things take.
Yeah.
You know, one, it's not just finding the money, it's all the public bids, it's all the procurement, it's, you know, nothing's quick.
Right.
So the, I don't want to put them up too soon because then they're not going to believe us. But if we put it up reasonably, you know, let's say like this, two, three months before it's coming.
Right.
Then right when they starting to doubt us, we'll pop ground, you know? Uh, because people do have a general distrust of, you know, are they really going to do it? I'm sorry, that just comes with the territory. But I kind of, in making a little rule, three months before, we'll put a sign up.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just kind of start doubting me. That way, you know, then we'll pop.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that you are going to wait until the kids go back to school.
Well, we just thought there's, there's not enough activities in any of our parks and we constantly trying to make more. Why take something away that, you know, at least let them, let them have a couple of months?
And that area does get used by the kids. Because every time I pass through the park, there's kids out there.
It's a beautiful area.
Yeah.
And between the new playground equipment and this, it's, it's well-used.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just want to add that this was 16,000 under budget, too.
Yes.
Awesome.
Good job.
Times like now, it's really good to get these kind of under budgets.
Another project.
And that's an ARPA project, so we're tracking it. We might need the money for something else, but I am tracking them. You know, I'd love for them all to come in on it, then we could add more projects. Uh, but, you know, don't get your hopes up yet. We got, that's the first of many, you know?
Aaron's going to let me know if it's not spent.
Well, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. All right, 7D.
Resolution 22 dash 120, approving contract for professional services with Domain Zabo and Associates for engineering services associated with the capacity flow rate study at Sucro Strive Wastewater Treatment Plant and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Move.
More motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any comment or discussion on this item or questions?
Now, this is actually going to help us to figure out how much we can let other people connect to us.
Yes, this is an issue with the parish.
Yeah.
We provide the sewer, we are the sewer for Highway 90 as well as the airport. Uh, and we have an issue that we have a flow problem. Sewer plant is a big machine. It's coming too fast for the machine can handle. It can handle in the long run. The capacity is not the problem, but the flow is. So it's causing us some issues. We've got to deal with it. We don't need the additional flow the parish does.
Right.
Even with the Loves expansion, even with the two other areas that we would at some point want to annex that we've talked about, we really are fine. We're not fine and let's plan to succeed. We're not fine as the parish develops 90 and we already know some big things coming and many of them in the works and I'm, I'm, I'm happy for that. Coming out at the airport and at Progress Point, the new industrial park. If those things happen, we, we're not, as a parish, as, as a whole, we can't accept that. Well, the parish government is working hard to get water and sewer in all locations. They have water in some and sewer in others. They're working hard, the parish president, the council, to get it to where they're developer ready. They're kind of the same plan we've been on that we own the property, we have the match, we have the design and we have a budget. We're shovel-ready. That's why we keep beating other communities out of money. They realize and they're working toward getting there. Between working on that and the projects that we know are coming, that big commitment from UL of $40 million, with those things coming, we can't handle that, that flow at the rate it's coming. So we're going to pay $30,000. We're not asking the parish for that money. We're using that money. So we understand our system. When we understand our system, then we are going to go, and we already talked about it, we've already, you know, on the same page. The parish will put up money to make the system function in the way that they're rating, where, the way their flow needs to. So what that means is they're going to have to do a study, analyze the properties on 90, come up with what's the best guesstimate for what's going to get developed and what might not. At the airport, what could come and kind of put all that data together to design a system or the system improvements to make it function for that anticipated flow. And what a great problem to have because that means we're growing. That means that, and if the parish succeeds, we succeed. Um, it, it helps the operation of our sewer plant. It, it's, it's good all the way around. Uh, so this is the, the first step of that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Gentlemen? All right, 70.
Resolution 22 dash 121, accepting change order number seven for the Bayutech Museum, Phase 2 renovations in the Dock Boree Swing and George Rodriguez Park Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Uh, David?
Yeah, so, uh, like early in the year when I came to y'all with, uh, change order, we had a, a grouping of various items, um, that we've collected over the past few months. And we want to try to close these, uh, items out because actually the whole project is closed out. We're, we're, that's be the next item on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so in doing so, just some housekeeping, um, and we had a credit of $357. Um, and I could go through those items.
Right.
We had a conflict box that was not needed, so that was a credit. Uh, we did have some lental work and some masonry work that we had to do, so there was an increase on that. That was, uh, after we demoed some of the wall integrity really needed to be addressed. Uh, there was some electrical credit for an elevator pit, which is coming in the next phase. Uh, some additional welding. The building was, it looked straight, the old building, but it's not straight. It kind of waved, so steel doesn't pin that well. So we had to do some additional welding on the site to help address that. And then we just had a small, uh, hose bib that we're going to do in the next phase. So we just kind of used all those and came out with a credit. And the contractor shouldn't have, I mean, this is, they're, they're punchless right now, so.
Questions or comments?
It's good to see the museum. Another addition to maybe bring some other projects in there.
Absolutely.
Of, uh, we serve the people that have had servants way before us that have done stuff for our Berry Parish. So we hoping that, uh, they reach out and, uh, put some of those in the museum, too, so they don't be forgotten about.
That's what they're for. They have a great archive facility coming. Uh, they could finish out that, that addition on the inside. Y'all see some photos on the next item. But yeah, they're going to have ample storage, ample archiving. It's going to be a big component besides just exhibiting, too.
Good.
That's great.
Good. Good. Uh, if there are no other questions or comments, please, uh, vote your machines. Thank you. Seven F.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-two, accepting a certificate of substantial completion for the Bayou Tesh Museum, Phase Two renovations, Doc Bory's Wing and George Rodriguez Park project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Any discussion on this one? Well, I'll let David go. Sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, in your packet, you'll, you'll see the punch list. We went through it. All our engineers went through it. Uh, this is, the only item left was the addition to the building. The, all the other components to the project had been previously completed. Um, so this is our punch out on the building. Um, for the most part, it is a sealed envelope. Uh, we just have a few little things to do on the, uh, exterior and some things on the inside. Um, but for the most part, it's just, it's punchless things. And we're, this is about five percent of the total budget. And so usually substantial completion is ten percent. So, you know, they're, they're even more complete than, uh, typical. So, and they'll be ready to, and they're starting to address these things now. So they'll have forty-five days to clear this list out.
That's good.
And then our capital outlay that has just been approved, not been in writing yet, but that's just been voted on and approved, does the next phase of the museum. So finishes that inside.
It's about five thousand. Total building's about ten. So, uh, you know, the old part's about five, the new part's five. It's twenty-five hundred a floor, so.
That's great.
Yeah. Any questions, comments?
Just can't wait till everything is complete, so I'll do a staycation in New Iberia.
There you go. There you go. That's it.
Man, she put my head up like I don't know none of y'all.
I like that. I like that. I'll stop, I'll stop and introduce myself.
You make sure I know I'm gonna be out of town.
That's good stuff. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Thank you, David. All righty, seven G.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-three, approving contract for professional engineering services associated with the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Purchase and Installation of Oil-Water Separator and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Contracts and Documentation in Connection Therewith.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Uh, come on up, John.
Bet this one over on the budget.
Uh, this is an oil and water separator that we desperately need, one to meet MS4, and just because we need an oil and water separator that we don't have. So we need the wash-down rack that's associated with it so that we clean equipment properly and meet all of the MS4 codes that we are bound by law to meet. So it's overdue, but, uh, we are in the process, and ARPA's given us the funds to do that. So this is another really good project.
Got a foundation, a canopy, we'll have the, the oil separator equipment, pressure washer equipment, the electrical, some electrical and whatnot that have gotta go in. Just gotta pinpoint where we're gonna put it.
Yes, yes. It's gonna be in Public Works, but we do need to go out there and pinpoint it. But soon as this contract's in place, we'll, that'll be our next move.
Awesome.
Any questions or comments?
So while you're up there, do you mind kinda talking a little bit about the road project?
Not at all.
Give us a quick update.
Cool.
I don't know anything about the road project.
Well, let's, uh, let's vote on this.
Okay, sorry.
Then we can hear about the roads. But I, and I'm fine with that. Uh, if there's no, you got any discussion?
No, no, no.
Okay, if there's no discussion on this item, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. And, uh, wanna tell us about the roads?
Uh, sure. Uh, so basically, we, uh, we have about ten roads in construction right now, nine of which are reconstructions, complete reconstructions. Uh, contractor is started in District Four, and they're planning on moving across, uh, and then across the bayou. Um, um, we have five, five of the streets that have been, the base has been, what we call resaw cemented. In other words, it's been reprocessed, and, uh, it's now ready for overlay. Uh, we're not gonna get an overlay for a little while 'cause they gotta get all, bunch of reconstructions out the way first. Um, you know, Twenty Arpin's probably been the biggest one being complained about, and I'm sorry about that, but they were supposed to start there and then work their way towards Finaloo, and then when the subcontractor got here, he flip-flopped and wanted to go the other direction. So we kinda threw things in a, in a conundrum as far as the, the, the route they went in. But they should be on Twenty Arpin next week. Deer Street will be finished this week. Um, we have to get the railroad people, which they can't come till Thursday. So anytime you get close to a railroad, you have to have someone from BNSF on site, and they have to flag and get you out the way if a train comes. So you gotta kinda work with them 'cause they can only come when they can come. So they'll be here Thursday, so hopefully by Thursday we'll be done with Deer Street, and then they'll be moving over to Glan and then Twenty Arpin. Um, I know they had put out some door hangers on Bank Street, and that's gonna get delayed a little bit because they have to move to the, what we call the special priority streets, and that is the streets that are near or in front of schools.
Okay.
So we have five of those in the project, um, and they have to get them done over the summer month, otherwise they get a day penalty every day after August seventh. So basically, they have two months to get these streets completely finished. Otherwise, they get fined like two hundred and fifty dollars a day until they are finished. So, um, tomorrow, actually, we're gonna move the De La Salle. They're gonna put up signs, and they're gonna start patching that street this week. We went walking today. I got with Joe. We need to, need a few little helps with some drainage inlets.
He called me for that, yeah.
So, uh, so we're moving forward. It's not as fast as they, they wanted to, to move. I mean, their schedule, they set their own schedule. They just basically give it to us. We review, we keep track. But, uh, their schedule is a little ambitious, to say the least. And, uh, they have a guy here. He's basically an assistant project manager, superintendent. He's kinda running things, doing scheduling. And we had a scheduling meeting yesterday, and I just asked him to be a little more realistic, you know, that way we don't have, you know, hopes, you know, they're coming and then they don't show up. So, uh, there is a little bit of shifting going around just because, you know, the reality is we are where we are in the project, and they, uh, they're making progress. I mean, we've done a lot in just the two weeks that the, the subcontractor's been here. Um, but we're probably realistically, before we get asphalt on the ground, we're three weeks maybe. You know, that, they'll have all the, that section finished for. They'll have De La Salle, Walnut done, and they'll probably have a couple of other streets prepped for just a patch and overlays at that point where they'll can come in, 'cause overlays are fast. I mean, they can run through probably all of District Four in, in a week and have it completely overlaid. And then after that, we'll have to do shoulders and striping, and the striping comes at the very end, 'cause that's a subcontractor. They come do everything all at one time. So we don't have temporary tape on the road, but, I mean, we have, we don't have much striping in the city now, so people aren't quite used to that. So I don't think it'll hurt.
That's the problem, but okay.
So, you know, we'll work through that.
So when you start, say like on, um, Twenty Arpin Road, it's all graded and everything the way it's supposed to be, and it's, it's ready to, the road's coming back. So what can those people expect? Uh, how fast is it gonna be? How, do people have to maybe plan to park somewhere else?
Um, maybe just for a day. Um, Twenty Arpin's a little different because we have really bad sub-base conditions. So that's the only street we actually plan, but we actually have to get, you know, you have your asphalt, then you have your base. But what's underneath is terrible. It's probably the, some of the worst stuff you can find. So on that particular road, they're actually gonna have to take half a lane at a time, flip it over twelve inches and get below that, and then flip it back. So there is gonna be some inconvenience for a day or two, but they're gonna get through that pretty quick. Uh, Twenty Arpin there is, it's lucky enough to where we have a section or two that, you know, nobody lives on, you know, so they can kinda work that in tandem. Um, but once they do that and the road's down, the saw cementing, that gets done in a day. And then once it's rolled on, uh, they do have to oil it at the end because they have to seal it, because we have to keep it from curing too quick. But that dries in a matter of hours, three, four hours, and then when you drive on it, it's no longer tacky anymore. Um, I don't know if you've driven down Juanita or Vera?
No, not yet.
Those are done. They're waiting for cement. So if you ride down those, that's what Twenty Arpin's gonna look like when we're finished with the base work.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's a solid street. It's, it's, I know right now it's real rough and chattery, 'cause we basically just stripped the asphalt. And, you know, basically what you have is what's left of the base that we have to rebuild. So, but that'll start on Twenty Arpin next week.
And that's from Lewis Street, right?
Uh, they're gonna start from, um...
Lewis Street?
Well, they're gonna start from, uh, Bayor because they're coming from that direction.
Okay, going opposite way.
And working their way towards Lewis.
Okay.
So, but it's gonna take them at least all next week, at least maybe two weeks to get Twenty Arpin done, 'cause it has to be handled so many times. I said, that's the only one we have in the project that we have to do that with. But it's just, it's, it's, one, it's a busy road, and two, it's really bad, you know, conditions below the road that we have to rectify.
Just wait till you get, get to Bank?
Yeah.
Banks, Banks gonna be a lot easier than you think. See, Banks for just milling, patching, and overlaying.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, uh...
Its base is good, you know?
Oh, okay. Well, that's a good thing.
I don't think it's gonna be that bad. I mean, I, I really, I mean, I drive it quite a bit. There are a couple of sections that are really bad, but for the majority, there's a lot of sections that are, that are pretty still in decent shape as far as base-wise. So...
Okay.
Um, so there, I was gonna get another notice because we gotta, gonna have to add, uh, Gerard and Walnut, but that'll be probably in about a week or so. I'm just trying to get them to look a little better ahead and try to do things that are next to each other that we don't have to come back and, you know, track on new stuff.
I think that's good.
So for Bank, uh, because I have half a bank, uh, half in four and half in five, do we need to tell people that it's gonna be a slight delay since they already received those little hang?
Yes. It will be delayed. It'll probably not happen till, most likely, after the summer. It'll probably be like August.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, just because they have to work on those priority streets.
Right.
Uh, during the summer, and there's like four of them. Now, if they get finished with those quickly, then they may jump back and start on it sooner, but I'm gonna make them re-tag Bank Street.
Okay.
Before we start again.
Okay.
That way they have a, and, and I've had a conversation with them, not jumping too far ahead of himself.
Yeah.
You know, and giving people false hope.
So, yeah. So, uh, you mentioned that you have to work on the streets that are near the schools or, you said in front, I think you said in front of the schools.
Yeah, there's four of them. They either pass in front or next to a school. We want those done before school comes back in August. That way they're finished and not obstructing them.
Well, one of the streets that, you know, you have to turn on to get to the school and the buses pass there all the time is Hacker from Bank.
Okay.
To, to get to Broussard to Passon. I mean, all of Hacker, almost all of Hacker needs to be redone. I think it's on the list anyway. But is that gonna be done before school starts?
Not that one. Uh, the ones we have is Ambassador La Melle, 'cause it runs...
In front of St. Edwards, yeah.
St. Edwards, uh, De La Salle, 'cause it runs in front of Catacay, Cypress Street, which is, runs behind the little, uh, the old Dotson, which is now the pre-k school.
Okay.
Um, and the, uh, I'm drawing a blank here. I have, no, I don't have the list for me.
That's fine.
There's one more, and I'm drawing a blank. I've got too many streets in my brain. It was just in that last notice. I just, I can't remember the last one.
Okay.
I don't remember. There's one more.
Yeah.
There is one more. Uh, I just can't remember which. Oh, oh, Anderson, Anderson Street.
Okay.
'Cause the asphalt section of Anderson Street from Rosa Lee to, uh, Field.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I mean, that's the major thoroughfare to get to in front of middle school.
Right.
So, you know, we don't want those major operations. I mean, it, the buses technically could, and then Bank Street's not gonna be that bad because we're just milling the edges. We're gonna be patching. So it's not gonna be like the whole roads tore up, um, um, at that time, you know. Uh, it's just gonna be, the crew's gonna work from one side and work the other way. So, I mean, they can still get around them. They're still gonna allow traffic to pass.
Yeah, always. So it's gonna be Bank and Hacker. That's like, kind of, one of the major sections where the buses pass to get to Passon Elementary. That's what I was asking.
Yeah. We didn't have that one as a special priority just 'cause Passon's, you know, a block over.
A block, block over.
Two blocks down. Uh, so no, that one's not considered in that group.
Okay.
Which, that was actually bid out that way, considering their contract's liable, not liable, but held to those streets, uh, in the contract itself, um, during summer.
Okay.
So, that's kinda where it stands. But I was told that the reconstruction group, 'cause it's a subcontractor, they use him, he's here until they let him go. So soon as they're finished reconstructing four and they get into, uh, three and five, they're gonna jump over into, uh, that's, I think Dustin's District Six.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're gonna move across to Brooks and kinda come back around.
Okay.
And finish up in Marlins. We're trying to strategically get...
So when's five gonna happen? You didn't mention five.
Five, well, five, I, I don't know if you have, on this reconstruction street, you have, I don't even know if you have a complete reconstruction, like, uh...
St. Jude?
No, that's not reconstruction. That's patch and overlay.
That's patch and overlay.
Okay.
Reconstruction's basically breaking down the whole base. I mean, if you have concrete under a road, that's not gonna be a reconstruction.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause we're gonna keep what's there and just reuse. But I, I don't know, I don't remember if you have, actually have any that are fully, I think most of yours are patch and overlays.
Okay.
So that's kinda their methodology, how they're gonna tackle it and just kinda move equipment around.
Good to know. Good to know.
So...
Okay.
When we went to the pre-construction meeting, Ricky attended, he had a great idea that they had agreed to. A lot of this recycled asphalt, as it's coming up, you remember we were gonna stockpile it at Bank at the old sewer plant?
They moved it quite a bit over there. I thought they stockpiled some over there.
Okay, well, I just...
On Amal Dog.
Amal Dog.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure, because that is gonna be the base for our new road. We've all talked about kinda revamping Bank Park. We would do an entry from Amal Dog. So, uh, we don't have the money for that right now, but when Ricky mentioned that, I was like, man, that's a golden idea. So we're gonna use that as our base to start the road and go from there. We can put limestone on top of it. We can do whatever. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we would continue to get, it's a pretty long area that we could get as much as we could.
That's something you might have to work out with them kinda...
Okay.
I mean, contractually, they're obligated to it.
I know that. They had agreed to give us some.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're, you're loaning them a facility, so you can just call it rent.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, but, uh...
Don't let them forget about it.
Yeah, no, no. And, and we have a lot more asphalt they have to mill up.
I know that. I know that. And I, and our little talk that we're doing Thursday, we're meeting on doing a little master plan on Bank and, and West End Park. But on Bank Park, I wanna lay it out, get our architects to lay it out and look at it, because it's something that we can start pecking at, you know? Cool, I just wanted to bring that up.
I was wondering when we were gonna start looking at a design for what's coming to Bank?
Yes, ma'am. We're working on it.
Please invite me.
I will. I will.
Don't leave me out.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do our schematic design like we always do, and then I'm bringing it here, you know? But I'll get with you, you know?
Well, I would like to be there when you get the design.
You will. I mean, some of it, we already defined in ARPA, is the only way I can spend the money. So it's gonna be a combination of the ARPA money, I know I'm off the subject, but the ARPA money, and then the capital outlay money that we get is where we really can get more creative and, and do something. But, uh, yeah.
It'd be nice to just see a nice picture of it, you know?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make sure it happens. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
And always just be patient with us.
Well, yeah, yeah, look.
It's gonna happen. As reconstruction is highly inconvenient, we know it.
Progress, you gotta, there's some pain in progress, you know? It's dirty, but it's a good thing.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to seven H.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-four, declaring certain assets as surplus and authorizing their disposal.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Any discussion on this item? And I can pretty well tell you that if I say it's junk, it's pretty well junk. We have gone through this list time and time again. We have tried, uh, Sandra has worked her butt off on this, and there's been some cars that, that we've tried to sell two and three times. There's been some issues with, uh, our own doing, you know. We sold a tractor. The guy came to pick it up, and then he realized, since the pictures, the transmission and some other parts were off the tractor. Uh, there's been a few trucks that, for some reason, somebody cannibalized some parts off of it for another truck but forgot to tell us. So she has worked really hard. Uh, LMA has helped as well with the whole process, but we're just to the point that the rest of this stuff, uh, you know, some of it's OPD stuff, some of it's, but, but we even look like, well, can I use this? Can I use that? It, it's, it's to the point that what's left really does need to be, it's too old.
I got a generator that's like thirty years old.
Yeah, needs to be scrapped.
Yeah. All this computer equipment's definitely too old.
Yeah, yeah. So, and some of it we took out of use, you know? I mean, that's the sad thing. Uh, anyway, any questions or comments on this list or on this item? And if not, we'll get it scrapped. So I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. And with the items that we did sell, the money goes back to the department, 'cause you know me, I was looking to bring it over here to do another project, but the money goes back by law to each department. So if they sold an old truck, if Public Works sold a truck, they get the money to go back into their budget, so. I'll just get them at budget time. Uh, seven I.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-five, approving contract for professional services on the Civic Center Marina Clean Vessel Act system and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by, I think, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item? If you're none, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to Jimmy, Property Standards. Good evening. Item eight A.
Revisit the state of buildings located at five-one-five Dag Street in District Two in action, resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-six.
Jimmy? Wait, let, give her a second to pull it up. I know, I, I'm...
Okay, you're running.
Yeah.
Jimmy's the patient, I know.
I know, Jimmy's patient.
That is.
That's our offshore man, huh?
Yeah.
He'll keep it in clean, but...
Bit out of order.
Yeah, that's Dag Street.
Here we go, this is the updates.
He's took all the siding, huh?
You hear that?
Yeah, but that's how it was last...
I was gonna say, that doesn't look different from...
Revisit is the same.
I think, I think he's been offshore, too, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the guy that has a hundred and twenty days.
Didn't he go for a long hitch?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty days offshore.
I mean, he's...
All right, Jimmy?
It's the same condition.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know what y'all wanna do, whatever y'all decide.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
A revisit date would be August second. A revisit date would be August second.
Okay, uh, which district?
No, it's Marlins District.
Oh, it's Marlins, I wasn't even looking, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm making most of the revisit.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Marlon Lewis to revisit and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this motion?
She's gonna clean it. It's gonna be a nuck.
So is he tearing it down, do we know if he's, or he's just gonna renovate it?
He bought a permit for fifteen thousand dollars to renovate it, renovate it in December.
There's no issue with, from a safety perspective, as far as it not being boarded?
It's open, I mean, I,
Have.
He's not doing anything, since he stripped the siding and the windows out of it, he's not doing, done anything.
And doesn't, doesn't look like anybody's like going in there to try and live or do stuff they don't have any business doing? Okay, I mean, it's, I mean, that's the only thing, is from a safety stand, standpoint.
Okay, any other discussion? Then, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Uh, let's see. Item eight B.
Revisit the state of buildings located at three-one-eight Week Street in District Five and action, resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-seven.
Jimmy, what you got on this?
Same, nothing's been done, uh, I've met with it two or three times out there with different contractors and, she bought a permit in December for thirty-two hundred dollars, but I, I just don't know where she's at.
So, this is the lady who, I, I told her that she had to do, make some substantial improvements before this meeting, because it didn't look like she was making any progress on it. And I also told her that if she didn't, that I would actually recommend that we demolish it.
Yes.
I did ride by there, and I haven't seen any improvements. I ride by there, you know, periodically, just to see if she's working, they're working over there, rode by there the other day, looks the same. And so, I'm gonna be true to my word, we mean what we say, and people need to understand that, and so I'm gonna recommend we do not revisit, and that we vote to demolish it.
Okay, then I have a motion on the floor to demolish. I have a second then, by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, and I have a question.
Jimmy, question, if we move to demolish the property, which I do support, because I, I rode like Diddy and took a look at it, do they get that thirty-two dollar permit fee back?
No.
No? I'm asking.
No.
Okay.
It was thirty-two hundred dollars worth of work, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the permit, the permit was a thirty-five dollar permit, but the value was, of what you had.
Well, I just wanna make sure that no one thought it was a thirty-two hundred dollar permit.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, was she notified about tonight, I mean, I know we, okay, good, and she's not here, so maybe she's given up on the project as well.
She's got two days left on her permit.
Yes.
Okay, so, there's no way she's gonna make substantial improvements in two days? And, um, every time I rode by there, there's not been anyone there working on this building.
Gotcha, okay, so I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion? None, then I ask you to vote your machines? Thank you. Madam Clerk, eight C.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-eight, declaring that the buildings located at eight-oh-nine Edna Street in District Two are dilap, are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and setting date for public hearing on July fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Jimmy?
This is set in the public hearing.
Okay.
Right there.
And that's District Two, so.
No, that's District Five, that's mine.
Oh, it says two right here, okay, sorry.
So, yeah, this is set to be demolished, there's a sign in front of it.
Yeah, all, yeah, all we're doing is setting it for the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, then I need a motion?
So moved.
Motion.
Okay, uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky-Gosselin and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed, is there any other discussion?
The parish is probably gonna help us pay for this, so that's a good thing.
Good, no, that is good, and I know that we, I've been contacted by a few parish council people about partnering with us, which is really great.
Yeah.
Uh, so if there's no other discussion.
I was supposed to get with you, he told me.
Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Good. Eight D.
Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-nine, declaring that the buildings located at eight-oh-eight Lombard Street in District Two are in a dilapidated and dangerous condition, and setting date for public hearing on July fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
I have a motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Dustin Swear, is there any discussion on this?
So, the only thing I will say, and Marlon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I just noticed her address is in California on here. And if I'm not mistaken, she's back in New Iberia. But the, the, I don't know if the, the information went to California and she didn't know, or what?
These are being, uh, Joe Burke's doing these. Yeah, so who's in Califor, who's back?
So, where it says in care of Swaneta Landry James, if I'm not mistaken, she's, she lives here now. And so, if, if this went to California, she may not be aware, that's the only thing I wanna point out.
We also run a local ad, in the local, in the Iberian.
Okay.
If it's on a state, so, do we know, does we have an address for her?
I don't know her address, but, I mean, I've seen her recently, and I don't think she's going back to California since her husband died, so, I think it's one of the situations where, again, Marlon, you may, I just wanted to call, to, to point it out that the, the address in California, and I think she's relocated back to New Iberia, that's it.
She has, she has.
Yeah.
Well, will somebody invite her? I mean, we'd love to give her notice if we knew how to do it.
I can try to find out. Her address.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll, uh, contact Mr. Landry.
I'm sorry, I just, I wanna be fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They know about this, huh?
Okay, uh, again, I was just point, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that the address may be incorrect for her, that's it. You, whatever you decide, you know, we'll follow your lead.
Right, we, we already decided to demolish it, right, we already voted to demolish it.
Nope.
Not, not that.
Not that one.
Okay.
No, we gotta reset it for a public hearing.
We're setting it for public hearing, and she needs to be here on July the fifth, that's, that's basi, oh yeah, so you're in line with your comments?
Yeah, yeah, and then if she's not here, you decide, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're in line with your comments.
Our decision comes next.
Yeah. So, yeah, definitely, Rich, I know the family well, they actually related to me.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So have you, we, so we attempted to reach them already, we certified them?
No, it went through a point of attorney.
Okay.
His notice didn't get in the paper on the time of the matter.
So get, they'll get a notice for July, the July meeting?
They'll send to the last known address.
Okay.
And then we'll do an anybody knowing the whereabouts of add in the paper.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
Well, hopefully somebody will watch this and tell her the house is up.
I hope so, I hope so, that's, this is all part of the public notice process.
She deserves fair notice, I'm not, I know.
Of course. Okay.
So, uh, but that house was for Mr. Joe Landry and Miss, that Joe Landry's my grandfather, the first cousin, and her, her, her wife, his, his wife, Miss Daisy, and, uh, they had five or six children, and so Swaneta is a grandchild of about fifteen or twenty-five, thirty grandchildren. I don't know, you know, I mean, I hope they do need to get, do notice thereof, but I, I don't see no, you know, reconciliation in that.
Too many owners.
Right.
Too many owners.
Yeah.
I guess if she comes next time, we'll find out, but if she doesn't, then.
Right.
It's a mute point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I had a motion on the floor and a second, so.
Yeah, just to set public hearing, and I, I'll, I'll go to, uh, her daddy's house, I know her daddy, my daddy's.
Good.
Okay.
Info.
Okay, is, there's no more discussion, please vote your machines.
Set in public hearing.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, item nine, A.
Discussion item on speeding on neighborhood streets by Councilwoman Ledbetter.
Yes, ma'am, you have a floor? Yes, I have a, a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation, just to give some highlights of some things. I don't know.
I think it's over. Yeah, it moves side to side.
Okay. Okay, um, I found five ways to stop speeding in neighborhoods, and those were basically the, the top five, video surveillance signs, police assistance, uh, raise awareness, and speed bumps, or humps, or, you know, that kinda thing. Okay, so I did pros and cons in a bo, of all of them. The first one, video, video surveillance, of course, it, in fact, all of them kind of reduce the speed. This one will bring in some revenue, because that's the cameras and all, um, and it also helps to reduce accidents. There's problems with it, the legality of it, uh, different municipalities have gone to court behind that and all. It's on the back and the front. And the cost, of course, is very expensive, and most of our ve, uh, video surveillance in town, it's not used for speeding, it's used to deter crime or to provide information to solve crimes. Privacy is another issue that they, um, in the, in the literature, could be sort of a problem with that. Okay, signs, we, we have signs all over town, yeah, they're safe, and they're not a nuisance, uh, they're easy to put up and stuff like that. And if you see a sign thirty-five and then it drops to twenty-five, it, you have some reduction in speeding. But, uh, for serious speeders, it doesn't deter them at all, they just blow right through it. And oftentimes, it's just ignored, so we have a lot of signs in town, a lot, a lot of signs on roadways, and people just ignore them. Police assistance, we, same thing, it reduces speeding, could be a, a big revenue for our, uh, city, and it also reduces accidents. If you see the police officer there, you do slow down, and that in turn lessens your accident ratios. Okay, cons, costs, a police officer costs a lot. And I know so far, we had one police officer that was hired to be a traffic officer, and I think we had two slated, but that, um, I don't know, but two are really not enough to cover all of the areas in town. One or two are not enough to cover all the areas, and most often times, they're needed elsewhere. Doing act, you know, trying to solve actual crimes.
Speeding's the actual crime.
Well, yeah, but, you know, serious crimes I'm talking about. Raise awareness, at every neighborhood watch meeting, always get the same thing, oh, they're speeding in my neighborhood, oh, they're just, it, it's just a roadway on, and they just blow through the signs or whatever that's there. So, raising awareness doesn't work, because like I said, I've been here five and a half years, and we, we've talked about it continuously. Speed bumps, now, for speed bumps, it does slow people down. If you, uh, have ever gone over some, it does slow you down, because if you don't slow down, you're gonna have some damage. It protects pedestrians, because you're wa, you know, you're slower than, you know, normal. And it's used only in areas where speed limits are thirty-five miles an hour or less. And it does reduce accidents and the severity, because you're going slower, and of course, you have those bumps there. The cons are liability, I know I was city attorney, uh, and our, and our mayor was kind of a.
And our insurance company.
And the insurance company was kind of, but others, other municipalities have them. Yes, sometimes they can damage the automobile, depending on how fast you drive over them. Now, if you choose to not slow down and hit the speed bump, well, you damaged your own car. Uh, signs are needed to let people know that a speed bump is coming, and sometimes it slows down emergency vehicles, because they too have to slow down to go over the hump when they may be on their way to an emergency. So in New Iberia, you have three main ways to reduce speeding, you have the signs, we have a lot of talking going on, and we have our police assistance. Now, right now, speeding is still a problem, so those three aren't working. Not very well. So the choices that remain from the five, video surveillance and speed bumps. We know that our video surveillance, we probably not gonna get that, because it's real expensive, and it's really a whole lot of liability. And Lafayette, they tried it with the cameras that snap your picture when you were speeding, and they got taken to court a lot, and a lot of times, this city lost. So which should we choose, out of the video surveillance or the speed bumps? Well, we have speed bumps in Weston Park, and they're also slated for Bank Avenue Park and City Park, even though they haven't come to fruition yet. They are, though, so can we?
We have one in place.
Yeah, we have one in place in West.
One paid for.
In Weston Park.
His hundred thousand dollars.
And it's working to slow that traffic down, it really is.
We actually need another one, because where it is, in other words, it does a, it does good for a very small distance. Even at the park, you just need to consider that, even at the park, in that little stretch in front of the park, the park's not huge, one is not enough.
Right.
So you end up with a minefield of a street, because you, to, to do that all over town, in my opinion, you'd have to have so many of them, because we noticed already, they go over the one in the Weston Park, and you wouldn't think that they would pick the speed up between here and the elevator, but.
Oh, and the, and the stop sign?
Yeah, immediately, you know, it's about the distance of here to our elevator. They're already picking speed up again and, and, and being unsafe, so we actually have kind of walked out there and looked that we're gonna have to have a second.
Right in front of the building?
Where we want, pretty much, it's a unique situation there, because there's parking. I can't give somebody the opportunity to just wheel around it, okay, because that would be even more dangerous. So there's only one area we can put a second, it's, we, we had looked at that already, when we were at the park looking at the mural and the other improvements inside the sin. So, speed bumps are a unique, that, they do have liability, they do have issues, and then the other problem is, if people are speeding, I don't know that that's our permanent answer, I wanna do it in the parks though, because we, we need to, we've got kids there, but you're gonna end up with so many of them to stop to keep that speed lower, that as you're going down the street, what these people do, I didn't say it was right, but they come, they go slow, they, we have a big sign that says bump, because I'm worried about the liability, they slow down, they creep back over, and then they hit the gas like they're taking off to a race. That's another, maybe it's just awareness and education, but that's another issue that there, it's not far at all, that, you know, a couple of car lengths and they're back up to an unsafe speed, I wasn't expecting that. I thought that you would slow down, and then you'd just say, okay, the stop sign is really not that far, what is it, sixty yards away? Eighty yards away, I'll just stay slow until I get to the, to the stop sign, that's one issue I hadn't expected, that, because I go out there a lot to see how it's working, and it doesn't deter them as long as I thought it would, to tell you the truth.
So, my suggestion would also be that we might need a third one there on Obie, I think that's Obie Street on the side?
On the side.
Because they come around that corner like, I don't even wanna say, but it's very fast, and so, if we're gonna be having kids or people cross over to the park elementary, we need another speed bump to slow those folks down, because they're gonna hit somebody.
Yeah, and the problem we're gonna find is, we're never gonna run out of spots to put them, that's, that's, that's the downside.
No, I, I just mean in the park.
I understand, yes, and they're about, uh, I asked, inquired, and it's ten thousand dollars a pop. You know, in the old days, they took some asphalt, I remember in City Park, they took some asphalt, just made a little hump. And, you know, that was a long time ago, before we lived in the world we live in, and, you know, that probably cost five hundred dollars. I was amazed that we put the correct con, and, and that's the only con, if I'm gonna do this, even in the park, that I wanna continue to use, because we, we haven't, knock on something, we haven't had damage reports, and they spread the, the jump, if you will, out so far, that's why it's called speed table, it's called speed table. And the reason it's sped out so far is that it, your car's on the whole hill, so you don't have nearly the, the potential damage. Uh, but they're ten grand a pop, you know? Uh, but definitely, I definitely figured that I would, uh, November's budget's coming, and so in our budget numbers, I, I wanted to put the money in to do it in the other parks, for sure.
So what about schools, I know we're talking about parks, but, I mean, people come, turn down Broussard, and it's like a little highway, and there's Peson Elementary right there, and I've seen the same thing on Anderson Street, um, you know, even on, on, on Hopkins Street, so.
I'm not being, you know, uh, uh, flippant, you, you'll never run out of areas to, the, the, the problem is, we do the parks first, then we say we're gonna do the schools, then we're gonna end up saying we need to do between the parks and the schools, it's gonna end up being that.
But those are where the kids are, that's, I'm just saying, that's where the kids are, and I, I'm telling you, they fly through on Broussard Street. I, I'd do some of my money to put a few on Broussard Street.
I hear you.
Because we need to slow them down.
I have our police chief here as well, because I knew we were gonna have this, you know, island.
Yeah.
We could come up with some, you know, possible solutions, um, you know.
Make that extra two hundred thousand revenue.
Well, and, 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 and believe me, look, you can ask the chief, we'd love to have that revenue.
Yeah.
You know, it's not as easy, we built the department and said, the taxpayers put this department in place, for one year, we're not gonna do any tickets, and we didn't, so we've had three years, we'll be three years old in July. We've had three years that we have tried four different traffic officers, okay, one, it's a unique part of the police department. You don't have officers, I'm gonna let Todd get up and tell you, but we don't have officers that wanna be traffic cops. It is not like, you know, we had a guy called Ticketmaster when the PD was here the first time, that guy stopped a funeral, I mean, he gave anybody a ticket, okay? He, he took joy in doing that, all right? We don't have that, to keep someone motivated to be our traffic cop has not been easy, they do not like to, we have many other crimes and many other issues that, you know, our police officers deal with, but traffic's not popular. I thought. I thought it was gonna be easier to get a traffic officer. I thought that, you know, you'd have a guy out there. Yes, I'm not trying to be a revenue-driven-by-ticket police department, but we also saw today, we're two hundred thousand dollars less than the cheapest police department. The chief would love to take that two hundred thousand dollars extra and be able to buy some equipment that way. We're still building a department.
And they have eight thousand less residents, too.
The courts would love the revenue. Because Trey is funded by some of that revenue. So...
The citizens are asking for it, that's a fact.
Yeah, yeah.
And, well, twofold there. They're usually the neighborhoods that you gotta be careful, because the ones that acts for the speed control is enforce everybody but me. Because we tend to get some of the same people that complain about the speeding, speeding themselves. So, we get a lot of that.
And we have had some calls and issues and complaints, you know, but I didn't know you were gonna stop me.
Too bad.
Part of that is, is that to be effective, and if you think of, we talked about, when the OPD was effective in writing tickets, they had a four-person traffic division. Because what tends to happen is that we have a lot of accidents in the city also. So, when we had our, our traffic enforcement, the person assigned the traffic, he tended to get pulled to do a lot of crashes. So, when he's on a crash, now, the state in its infinite wisdom wants more information. Every time we do a crash report, it takes about an hour and a half to get that completed. Because now, it's a brand-new e-crash system. It went from Louisiana crash system to an e-crash system. Well, now, the state wants more stats. They want, you know, everything is stat-driven. So, now, our e-crash program requires a extra five pages of information that the officer has to fill out. It's not just the crash report itself, it's everything else involved in doing that crash report. So, it's taken an officer a long time to complete that report when they're on a crash scene. So, it's not just going to crash, here's your thing, you know, go about your business. That officer has another hour and a half of paperwork to do just to have one crash. Figure that you have anywhere from five to eight crashes in a day. You know, how many hours is that? So, that's where we're starting to get trapped up, because my patrol officers generally take it right now. So, you pulling that officer off a shift to handle that crash and take an hour worth of paperwork. Now, you know, we extend them, give S Y U C that it's went from seven to ten days at a port getting ready, now to ten to fourteen days, because there's such a vast amount of information that has to be turned in in this, in this system that's required of us. You know, everybody in the state of Louisiana is on the e-crash system. So, that's where some of the dynamics come in. Now, to be effective, we have to grow our traffic section. The mayor and I have talked about it quite a bit, to have a two-man team go out and effectively, one takes the crash, the other one's writing citations and errors to slow people down. We're getting there. Every time I say that, and I gotta be careful in saying that, the mayor's, you know, gonna smile on this one, and he is, because every time we get, because we have what we call eight people in the bucket right now that are getting trained to start hitting the road. And so, but our process of training our officers to be able to be street-effective and basically driving their own, in their own police vehicle by themselves, it takes four months to train them, and then you got three months of the academy. So, you have seven months, eight months before, and of course, there's acclimation period where we start, so it's actually a month before the four months. So, you have an eight-month period before a police officer we hire actually driving that car on his own, his or her own. So, you know, it sounds easy to say that we just hired eight officers, we did. But those eight officers, you gotta look at eight months before they're gonna turn around and start driving cars. Right now, you see some of our two-man cars out there. Well, that's a two-man car because that second person's in training. So, it's just a process. We have eight right now in the bucket that are ready, are getting ready to hit the road for us. But it's gonna take us, they've been hired for the past three months, but you look at another five months before they're effectively hitting cars. When that happens, and if we hold on to our core group...
And they gotta finish the academy.
Yeah, and they gotta finish the academy.
Every once in a while, we have some that we do F T O first.
Yes.
So that we think they wanna be a cop, and they think they wanna be a cop. So, they spend months going with our officers, so, and in New Iberia, you see a little bit of everything. So, they understand police work before they go to the academy. We still have some to get to the academy, and then don't stay long and quit. So, that's, you know, just a little aside there.
But, and why we do the F T O program first is that, you know, the academy comes secondary. Within the post standards, police officer standards and training in the state of Louisiana, you have to post-certify your police officers within a year. We take the first four months to train them to make sure that they're capable of being a New Iberian police officer. Not everybody can. You know, it's just, it's a line of work that, that nobody's coming bang down our doors saying, hey, I wanna be a police officer. You know, so, you know, part of that process is, is that to make sure that, that they're ready and capable of being a police officer. When that happens, then we send it to the academy. And then when they come back, they're already ready to go, because the field training's taken care of, and then the academy certifies them. So, then we go, and then, then they're off and, off and going. We believe that our core group is solid. We got a great core group of officers that work for us, that have been here from the start and are still with us, and will be with us for a long time to come. That core group is there. We can hold on to our next crop of officers that we have, then we'll be able to enhance our traffic section to be able to do that. Hate to say just give us time, I know I keep saying that, and I've been here before, and, but we're getting there, you know? We've weeded out some officers that weren't what the standards that we felt were there, and some have left on their own accord for two other things, and go in private sector and those things. But as we weed those out, we're trying to get to a core group of people. Our core group's starting to get bigger and bigger. And as we get that, then, then we'll solidify our patrol section, and then we can go to other, other areas. Obviously, what's most important, where we took my traffic, when our crime rate has gone up recently, I think we all know that, we started addressing that in my investigation section, where we put together teams to go out and, and deal with some of our violent crimes. And I agree with you that, that violent crimes take precedence, and that's, that's where our focus is. And we have recently, and the mayor's aware, that over the past month, we've had multi-agencies in our meetings room. And, and we have joined our efforts, not just our agency, but the sheriff's office and all the Kadena law enforcement chiefs and sheriffs have been here. And we have picked up members of organizations in this city, and cities where they live and that's surrounding us. We've picked up eight people in the past week and a half that are doing violent crimes.
That's great.
So, we're gonna continue, picked up actually three yesterday, where we think that there was a retaliation about to take place, and, and we picked up three more with, with some more guns. So, we're going after the violent criminals, and that's where our focus is. And I appreciate you mentioning that, that our focus should be there, and I agree with you. You know, now, traffic is a part of a problem. I recognize that, and I don't shy away from it. So, we have had officers that have written citations. We got Saldano that's out there writing citations in the little gray charger, and he's out there trying to be as many spots as he can. You know, but I agree with you, not just one or two officers is gonna solve the overall problem. Because Ms. Markod's district has, has called many times, and I'm sure she gets the phone calls, about people speeding in her neighborhood, and Mr. Bruce Art's district, and everybody's district. It doesn't stop just with one. How can you be everywhere at once? That's difficult, I think.
It is.
And, and the cameras, I'm gonna tell you that there is some legislation that, that fights that, that, that thing of putting enforcement cameras. There, there's actually, you can't put them on interstate, and you can't put them on certain highways, and, because it's illegal, according to the legislature. So, I think you're fighting a legal battle on that. That's why Lafayette's gotten rid of them, pretty much every city got rid of them.
They didn't get rid of all of them.
No.
In other words, they got rid of the Red Flex cameras, but there are cameras that mail you a ticket, because I just got one, I mean...
I got one in the mail today.
I don't know which cities are still doing those. I don't know which cities are still doing those, I know there's lawsuits that have been against. I can tell you that, that, are they, the company is gonna make a lot of money on your, on ours, on our citizens. You're gonna make some money on the back end, too, if you do it as a civil ordinance. I think it's a civil ordinance, Mr. Simon can probably chime in on that. There is some entities out there that do it, and actually doesn't cost you any money to do it. But the company's, that company, private company's gonna make money.
But some cities have... Some cities have their own.
Yeah.
Some cities, because the problem came in Lafayette with that Red Flex company, the rates were astronomical. But I think that cities that do it now, there's some cities that are doing it that they're recouping the benefit. But I don't think a company, I think they just taking the pictures, sending it out, they have the hard with the software.
You have to be able, if it's a red light camera, you can do that, but you have to, if you're doing speed enforcement, you have to be able to have a certified radar to do it.
Mine was a red light. Yeah, mine was a red light.
Yeah, mine was a red light as well.
Yeah, the red light's different, because you got a red signal that's keying up the camera.
That could be done.
Yes, it can be.
Yeah, but red lights, but she's talking about speeding in neighborhoods, which would mean a radar enforcement.
Well, I'll take whatever kind of camera I can get.
Yeah, because I...
Yeah, but radar enforcement needs a radar, has to be certified, so most of those.
I understand that, I understand. But a red light camera, in some instances, could help us.
Yeah.
It could.
Red light cameras can help.
And they do have the ones that actually does the speed as well, because I got a ticket like that in Atlanta.
Well, and that's gonna be, but that's gonna be through like a Red Flex company. Because they gotta certify their radars within that, that box that they have, where they have the radar up with the camera, it takes a picture when they catch you speeding over a certain limit. So, that is a thing that, that you'd have to start dealing with a private company. Or, if you do your own, you gotta be able to service those radars, and according to the law and traffic, and Judge Hyken and Nicole will chime in, but you have to ping your radar every shift to make sure that it's calibrated.
Right.
And you gotta make sure that you certify that calibration, that radar.
Well, we have to do that with the ones on the cars today, right?
Yes, we, we calibrate our radars every shift.
Okay. It, it sounds like we actually, I mean, based on what we're talking about, you guys are bringing on people as quickly as you can, getting, trying to get the right people in place to make sure that we can deal with some of this crime, which is awesome. But the speeding is also a major issue, and maybe we have to have a combination of both. We need some of these cameras so that we can begin to slow this down. Because this is a, a real big problem for our citizens. I mean, I think we're all probably getting calls about this. Maybe a combination, maybe it's a hybrid method that we put in place to kind of deal with this issue.
I don't wanna rule anything out, because we do know that, we all know we have an issue.
Right.
So, we wanna deal with it. And I thank Deidre for bringing a bunch of ideas, because I do think that's what it's gonna take.
Right.
Only you can really rule anything out at this point. You know, our manpower coming up and having more people dedicated directed to traffic, you know? And maybe the speed camera's not the way to go, but maybe a couple of red light cameras could help us.
Right.
And prevent some accidents. So, that's, that's why I don't wanna rule out camera completely, because, you know...
Can we do, can, can we also use those cameras at...
She's saying what I'm saying.
Can we also use those cameras, and Chief, maybe you can answer this, at stop signs? Because we have people that blow straight through the stop sign, we have a lot of four-way stops in New Iberia.
We do.
More than I've ever seen anywhere.
You need something to trigger it.
We have too many, because people tried to stop speeding with four, in other words, the same kind of thing with the speed bump. People got on this kick when I was the pro temp, and then it became a contest that they were almost, who could outdo who and put more four-way stop signs, and they thought they were gonna control speed. So, one great case in point is, four-way stop signs don't control speed.
That's right.
We're gonna be having this discussion. So, they put them up, I mean, you go Dale Street. I remember it was every district, every person in the district, in their district wanted one on Dale Street. So, we ended up with all these four-way stop signs.
Right up near my house, and they blow through it all day long.
And so, it's not working.
Yeah.
I don't know that a stop sign, because see, the, the way that the red light camera system works is, it's triggered by the light turning red, which turns the motion sensor on. That some, a motion passes through, then it's, the camera goes. I don't know the triggers, but a stop sign would be, you'd have to leave it motion sensor the whole time.
Yeah.
And do it.
That would be difficult.
Okay, it's just that we got a lot of them, and I see people just blowing through them, just, I don't know how you stop that.
So...
Yes, Jeff?
There's gotta be somebody who's thought this out.
Yeah.
And has done a better job than we're doing now. Maybe we could find somebody who's had some success and steals some ideas.
Yeah, I agree.
And not reinvent the thing.
Yeah.
If, if, are we looking at with the camera side, or?
Just, no, just reducing speeding, I mean...
Kind of in tow, you know?
Has, has any community been successful in...
You know, at one point, they had those, those trailers. I know Baker P D had that, that, what you saw with Safe Speed, when Lafayette had that, that van that would go around. And, and Baker had actually the, what you see in those flicking speed limit like the sheriff has, where it tells you how fast you're going.
Yeah.
Actually, there, there was a radar enforcement trailer that you carried around. You parked in a spot, and you left it there, and it, it had a camera attached to it that when it got to speeding, it took a picture of you. And then when you passed, it took a picture of your license.
Yep.
Those are around. I know Baker had a lot of success with them. They put up warning signs at certain parts to keep the legality together. I can check with, Naps, I know retired from Baker way back, but I, I can check with the chief of Baker and see if they're still using those speed trailers. It is an enforcement trailer, they were, it's similar to that Safe Speed van that was in Lafayette for a long time. There, there is some stuff out there that, look, these vendors are, are dime a dozen at sell these things.
Yeah, they call on us all the time.
Oh, yeah.
But, but, but on the back end, and I'm not trying to tell you that financially, financially, the city's gonna make more than they'll make when it comes on the back end of it, because your fines are gonna go, and you're gonna exceed what you're gonna get over a matter, over a matter of time. You know, it's just a matter of pulling those trailers to areas where you have a speed problems.
I'm just wondering...
You can leave them there as long as, you can leave them there as long as you want.
Yeah.
You know? So, they, they do have those, those are things that I'm aware of, that I know were being used. I know it's being used in Baker.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if L M A has any member that's had some success?
Well, I, I, I have, I'm attached to three hundred and fifty chiefs throughout the state of Louisiana. I'll send out a message and find out what they're using for their enforcement outside of traffic sections.
Because we have some things we do well here that other people are getting instruction on, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. There's gotta be somebody out there who's thought about speeding more than we have.
And the towns that really succeed are on I-ten and bring in half a million dollars a year, and they can afford to really, you know, attract an officer to do that.
Yeah, they get the forfeitures, so they can...
They get the forfeitures, they get the drug money, they get, you know, we're just not in that...
Look, I, I, in fact, I was on the phone with the Jennings chief today, and, and he, his speed enforcement, he gives his officers forty dollars an hour to go out there and write citations. And they write a ton of them. And they went up on their fines, and...
Well, that's just on I-ten.
Their city doesn't have an interstate.
They got that I-ten.
Yeah, they got I-ten.
We have no interstate.
Can we just pay somebody?
Can we like, can they do overtime, but the be, the fines, pay for the overtime, you know, money?
We actually have a program like that that we do do. But part of our, all of our, our officers are training are the officers. And then we're actually taking calls. You gotta also, you gotta also equate the fact that within a twenty-four-hour period, I call it in a day's time, we take around a hundred calls. So, you gotta also add that to the equation, that I don't have just a free car to go out and just go sit in the neighborhood for two or three hours at a time, because there's officers being called to the next call.
Right.
And then we have officers in training, so it's a little bit of everything. So, where I have eight cars on the road right now, well, those eight cars are spread out into different, into our districts and also taking calls. So, we're one free, we try to free up as much as we can to do more things. And if you have a crash, you pull them one off.
Absolutely.
Then if you have a, a scene of a crime where you work in a burglary, you have a couple of officers clearing, it's not just one, a domestic takes two cars.
Right.
You know, we don't go with one officer to a domestic. You know, it's just, it's not a, you know, it could be volatile, to those kill more officers than, than any other crime. You know, so, you know, it just, where we're required, where we start taking more and more calls, where you see two police cars or three police cars on certain scenes, that's three of my eight.
No, and that makes perfect sense, Chief, and you guys are doing the right things. But in a situation like this, then we have to let technology or some other thing help us out here. We've gotta have another option.
Well, the speed trailer might be, you know, that might be the best, we didn't even know about it.
Right.
Yeah, because the investment is, if you, if you buy three of them, you can put in three different areas at one time. And you have three different sets of tickets being written in those areas.
We use ten of them, I'm serious.
It's three offices.
It is three offices, it is. And, and it's, it's a single cost, you pay for the trail, and then you one-time cost.
Right.
I think, I think we've spent a good amount of one-time costs.
And you can set them up in any area?
You're gonna have to pay overtime, right?
Right.
You can set them up in a neighborhood?
Well, what, what we have is, I see you, Brooke, as soon as...
Okay, cool.
We, we have, we do have, one of our, one of our officers is assigned to our support. Chad does a little bit of everything when it comes to fleet maintenance, those types of things. He's getting assigned a pickup truck, he'd be able to carry those things to different neighborhoods.
Yeah, these kinds of events, and he's really doing us some good.
Yeah, he, he's, he takes care of our inventory control, those kind of things. And he, when, when he comes to servicing the Humvees and all that stuff, the hurricane season and all that, he does all of that. But we would get him to go bring it to whatever neighborhood, and then plant it down and bolt it in. But we would get him to go bring it to whatever neighborhood and then plant it down and bolt it in. Because you want to make sure somebody don't drive up to it and steal it.
Steal it, yeah.
Brooke, I know you had your hand up for a while.
Thank you. I have two things, actually. There's a town that I drive through and there is a sign on this random road, there's no lights or anything, saying that traffic is monitored by a camera. If you look around, there's no camera, there's nowhere for a camera to be. So I don't know, are you able to do that? Just put up a random sign threatening? Option? No, 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 we can put up cameras too. No, no.
More.
So, we can put up cameras in certain spots, but then have these signs up, you know, and you never know, is there a camera there or not? But it gets their attention, because it got my attention. Number two.
Speed monitored by satellite.
And and Jeff can attest to this because in the olden days, you used to have a sign that said, Drug Enforcement Ahead. And put some light, some police lights like ahead and the people would turn off and everybody would get in that, turn it off.
Oh, my gosh. So the second thing.
That used to work and I became illegal as well, couldn't do it anymore.
I wonder why we're doing that.
It became entrapment.
I know, it was entrapment.
Yeah.
We need to
Yes.
figure out a way to keep our officers here because I communicate with a lot of them because of the neighborhood watch and, you know, I kind of get attached to them and the next thing I know, they're gone. So I don't know what it is. Like, what do we need to do as a city to keep them?
We train our officers very well and in many instances, they move up. And you can't fault a guy for, or a girl, a woman, for increasing their career. So part of our problem is, we're a new department, we believe in a lot of training, we spend a lot of money on training, and we have people that go to higher agencies. We have one leaving now that's going to, uh.
Homeland Security, which is, guess what, our traffic officer.
And he's our traffic officer. And he was doing a great job. Well, he's going to Homeland Security. We have people that move up to the state police. We have some that leave for the opposite reason, uh, but, you know, our pay is good, y'all helped adjust our pay. Our insurance package is through the moon compared to other communities. We're still a young agency, so if you hang in the game, we have some officers occasionally leave for less rank. In other words, you you a sergeant here and you're gonna quit and leave to go be a patrolman somewhere and make less money. So money's not always the issue. Uh, you know, some of it, we beat our heads trying to figure it out.
You know, and and you know.
Just being honest.
The the climate of law enforcement overall, and look, we've been here a long time and Mr. Simon, I know that we've been here a long time. Over the shift over the last ten years and and we've been seeing it nationwide where police have have been kind of villainized to some extent. When when everything you're doing and then you just had some legislation up in our state legislature that wanted to take qualified immunity away, which means is every time somebody sues a police officer, they would have to go get an attorney on themselves because they're getting personally sued, even if it's frivolous.
We have no police officers.
So, it didn't pass, but it had traction. So when you have, you know, locations throughout our country and it starts to hit you, affect you locally, where people say, well, I don't want, I don't, I don't want to do that work, let me go do something where I don't have to worry about getting sued or whatever that may be and have so much oversight, and then you deal with some crime trends that have changed, you know, we know that some of our younger generation have decided to not regard human life the way, and you see a lot. I mean, look, if you come to work and it's not just New Iberia, go to Opelousas, go to Abbeville, go to Crowley, go, I mean, Lafayette is going, is heavily, got some heavy crime spikes right now. Go anywhere, but you're gonna see a lot that as a young police officer, me coming up, I didn't see a lot of till years after. You know, and, you know, I saw a lot of it over my years throughout, but because I worked some major crimes, but not to the level that we do now. I mean, we're gonna go on eight to ten to eleven major crime scenes of of deaths, you know, violent violent crime deaths in this city any given year. And that's a lot for, I mean, put, expose a person that's never been and never seen that type of thing and and they're, you know, growing up and all of a sudden you're a police officer and you're walking and you're seeing, you know, someone that's that's been murdered. You know, that that's some things to absorb. Then you see a lot of other kind of crimes, you know, you deal with rapes and you name it in any course and that's a lot to absorb and then then you villainize the the people that protect, you know, and it gets a lot to deal with, you know, and and, you know, we've we've made an effort that then I appreciate the mayor and this council has has allowed us to have a wellness program now for our officers to be able to kind of cope with some of these things that they deal with on a daily basis.
And it's very used, let me tell you, it's it's.
And it is. Our our people take us up on that and and they they go see the the councils that are available to them and and have conversations, but, you know, we're in the real world because mental health is is something that we're, look, you see the mass shootings in the schools and we just had a meeting uh, yesterday with the superintendent and our principals in the schools in our city and, you know, uh, you gotta take these things serious and then our officers gotta deal with these people that deal with mental issues and having attend with that because we're dealing with a lot more mental issue cases uh, here than we than we ever did. I mean, a good bit of fifty percent of our calls are people that have mental health issues.
Yesterday, we have all the principals of the schools and then half of my administration who is there to have a meeting with them have to leave for a real threat.
Yeah.
Which would have been a mass shooting or or, you know, a drive-by or something. So half of the people there to cater to the schools, to make sure we have a good plan, to make sure God forbid this happens, we're all on the same page, have to run out and leave halfway through the meeting to go tend to some people with guns and a threat. So, you know, it talk about driving home, that anything could happen at any time in any community right now, the way things are. Because you used to think that'll never happen here. Well, we don't know what could happen here. We have to rack our brains and plan for every contingency because the world's kind of upside down. When you look at it, you know.
And I could tell you this, that as a department, we're prepared. We we can deal with any situation thrown at us. You know, it it's interesting because I had a conversation with with the current superintendent and the incoming superintendent was at our meeting. And I actually called Ms. Lavila today and asked her for some feedback of how the meeting and and, because in the middle of our meeting was when the threat came in and my staff stood up and because the captains came in and and was filling us in, filled me in, filled the mayor in, and we were walking in and out to plan for what was coming. And the feedback that that she got was that they, the new superintendent and and the people that were there felt that they felt even better about how prepared our law enforcement was because our sheriff was there too in the meeting. And we were prepared because we called, we had the the sheriff's resource because some of this threat was gonna go into the parish.
Yeah.
You know, and that we 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 went and deal with it, you know, we ended up arresting three people and we got some guns off the street. You know, so we're prepared, your department, your your department, that that that's, we're your department. We're ready. We can take, we can take care of anything thrown at us. Speeding's a low, low health resource. Major issues, we can take it. Now speeding, if we get some technology, we'll be better.
Technology.
The bumps are looking a little better.
Yeah, they are, maybe they are.
But I'm telling you though, that that there is nothing that's not thrown at us, us crime-wise, that that we're not capable and well-trained and able to deal with. We have a great staff, we have a great group of officers that do a great job, a hard job. But but they work their tails off. Um, they they work a lot. They're contributing right now for the training part that we have, bunch of officers coming in. And they do a great job. And yes, technology would help us.
Yeah.
So we. I'll just say, while he's here, I watched the chief put together that multi, uh, many different agencies to deal with some of these bigger issues and put together and our department, we we took the lead in organizing it, let's put it that way. And then everybody went out and did their thing. But that sharing of intel and the fact that we took that, you know, the chief standing right here took the initiative to say, we're gonna put something together that's bigger than us because it's not about us, it's about all of our communities and all of Acadiana and trying to stop some of this crime wave, you know, it it just showed me that one, I had the right guy and that our department is is going in the right direction, that we are able to call and bring together other agencies and start working together. So it kind of does show you the bigger picture and the commitment that, you know, we all have, but uh, watching the department, it's, uh, it's been a blast over four years to watch it grow and every year I come to y'all for some new gizmo or some new equipment. Uh, the next thing I'm coming at is, uh, we want a Bearcat. We need a Bearcat. It's a military vehicle. We are vulnerable in bringing our SWAT team around in a bread truck. Okay, is no.
Yes, you are.
That's just life. So we have some backup plans and.
The red truck says, shoot me.
Yeah, so, you know.
And it is a bread truck.
We we need it, we need a Bearcat. So, you know, it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. I've been shopping. It's completed refurbishment, it's got a new engine, it's ready to go, it's a military vehicle that is, you know, what we need to deliver our SWAT team safely. We're coming for that. We we, seeing what I see, that I'm able to go along as just an observer, as just, you know, ride with the chief and see what's happening and go to these scenes and 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 see what I've seen in four years, yeah, we need a Bearcat. So, uh.
And don't think it can't happen to a police officer because not but a couple of weeks ago, a probation officer's car got shot when he was doing surveillance on somebody that broke their their ankle bracelet off.
Hmm.
So that's where thi- these, this Bearcat is bulletproof.
And and we figured a way to pay for it, we think, but we're gonna come in our November budget and and look at, we we actually might try to do it before November with some funds that we think we're gonna be okay on. Uh, but that's something that's coming, so. So probably see a purchase of a Bearcat.
So can we, um, look at the video surveillance and also maybe some additional speed bumps or lumps or whatever?
Where I at least need to, as quick as I can, get them in the other parks so that we can start looking because having having two in West End Park, let's say having a couple in Bank Park and a couple in City Park would be a good litmus test because one maybe isn't, you know, gonna be the test. But getting five or six of them out there where we can monitor and see, you know, how many lawsuits, how much damage comes, what 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 we're up against. Then we could make a, uh, an intelligent decision on, do we want to branch out? If we end up with some lawsuits and this and that and car damage and those kind of things and the insurance company starts squawking at me that your rates are going up or I'm dropping you if you don't get rid of them, which could happen. So I have no problem with trying to speed up. I might come to you for a little money, but as we solve with our finances, we can do that. So I might come for a budget amendment to say, let's put some more in the parks. I love the idea of looking at the trailer. I think that that's something we need to research. Uh, cameras on a side note, but just for a second, uh, when we renegotiate our CLECO franchise agreement, we've talked about this and about it publicly before, we are determined to end up with our own camera system. We hope that Crime Fighters brings us some additional cameras, and we've got a few of them. We are hoping that we get more of those, but but that has taken for whatever reason, longer than we anticipated. So we would like to end up with our own cameras that we can monitor and that's where I have tagged and am asking you to kind of agree to that. We've talked about it before, that when we renegotiate the CLECO franchise agreement, that would be something that, you know, could greatly help in solving and deterring these major violent crimes. Um, we have two hundred thousand dollars to do some anti-violence programs through our ARPA. Uh, I've started to flesh out a little, very rudimentary, but I've started to flesh out a little program. I am gonna ask for feedback on that soon when I present it and that's something that in conjunction with the police department is is a PR campaign about anti-violence, but you gotta start somewhere. So the combination of that, of some cameras, back to the speeding of maybe the trailer camera, of a few more speed, speed tables, I kind of think that the solution is 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 all of the above, uh, but I I have no problem with it and, you know, I I need the the chief and the.
I'll have more information for you at your next meeting to find out about the trailers and exactly what, I'll flesh out the information on that and the cost around it.
So you're gonna have a little presentation for us?
I'll do a pretty low, uh, PowerPoint, but I'll have something with it.
So write that down, presentation from
Yeah, yeah.
our police chief.
Update for the police chief.
Now, now, we are about to.
Pressure that, Deidre. Presentation, I might put some pressure in.
And and one of our training tools that we just invested in a few months ago is just about ready, that I'm actually gonna uh, ask the council, invite the council to come and actually be a part of that training, is we have a Shoot Don't Shoot simulator that we're putting in an office in our CID building. And I'm gonna invite you to see how you do as a police officer in a Shoot Don't Shoot simulator.
Okay.
And you'll get to see real time because it's it's actually real-time action. The the gun will be a real gun, just simulated. It'll be hooked to a, to a, uh, some technology that when you aim and shoot, you're aiming and shooting at what you're shooting at. So we'll see if you kill an innocent bystander or a a bad person because I tell you, things turn fast.
Yeah.
People don't realize that, you know, they say that they didn't, uh, shoot you first or whatever, well, you give them time, you're dead. You know, so it's it's a very, uh, it it's it's a full screen and you will be real-time in the room. And you'll make decisions in a split second like a police officer would do. So I'm gonna invite y'all to come as soon as it's ready, it's just about ready. And, uh, and when when it is, I'm gonna invite you to come and see how you do. Should be fun.
Should be, yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully you don't shoot innocent people there, Mr. Morlow.
So, good question. This is, I don't know, maybe for you, Freddie, instead of for, um, the chief. Um, have we ever thought about doing like, um, these mass shooting simulations so that we could, um, teach people how to respond or what to do? Because when I worked for Chick-fil-A, we used to have those all the time uh, so that we would know how to handle if someone got on campus and and started shooting a gun.
We visited with schools in the past and went over their plans and gave our input. The meeting we had with the principals, we are tweaking some of their plans and getting everybody uniformed, the private schools and the public schools all on the same page. And that's exactly what we're planning to do.
Excellent.
We are going to do that and I'll let the chief tell you about it, but.
Yeah, we're we're planning a a actual true mock scenario of how everything goes and we're gonna do it real time so we can train with it along with the Acadian ambulance who's already reached out along with the sheriff's office and other resources and we're gonna get some administrators from the schools. We're not gonna do it during a school year. We don't want to traumatize kids.
Right.
That's not what our scenario is gonna be about. We're gonna have people, basically actors that will go in and and simulate an active, uh, an active threat, whether an active shooter, whatever active threat is. We will do exactly what we do in that scenario as it would unfold like the Texas school did and and other schools that have had it. We're gonna actually, we're look looking to do it, hopefully do it within the next couple of months. If not, we're gonna do it in the next break.
Okay.
So it's something that actually my SWAT commander, Lieutenant Rusty Moe, actually gives out trainings. He went and gave one to Iberry Medical Center recently of if it should happen there, you know, how they should, how it should handle protocols, that type of stuff and what we do.
Right.
So he actually has been giving presentations to, uh, to the hospital and to other places. So we are, that that is, COVID kind of set us back. So now with with, I know it's still a COVID time, but we're getting more towards where we're getting back to some sense of normalcy. We're dealing with the virus and also being able to conduct ourselves and have in-class and in-school stuff.
Right.
So now we can actually train and do it in in a real-life environment.
And we just spent a lot of money sending our officers to training.
Yeah.
Other out of state, all over the place so that they can bring that knowledge back and train the rest of our department. But that's something that in the last two budget years, I'm probably gonna increase it, but we have spent good money, you know, doing that.
We actually have two offices going to active shooter instructor course.
Yep.
And we have our school resource officers going in the next couple of weeks to a training. One's going to advanced and one's going to the basic, because he just started. And he actually has SWAT training, so that helps too, but but our SROs, we added a, if you didn't, wasn't aware, I think you worked, we passed through the council with the school board, asked for a third at the elementary school of Jay Hop, so we have a third SRO in town. So they all go through not only the juvenile academy, the school resource officer certification, they also do active shooter certifications and all those things. So like I say, that, I keep, I'm I'm gonna brag about our department, but there's nothing that we can't handle.
Excellent.
Traffic technology.
We're working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, our department is, we're we're well-trained. You know, that's why it is sad to see some of our experienced officers leave sometimes because they are well-trained. We we send them, uh, I'm just talking about with children, I mean, our juvenile section is probably the most experienced part of our department. You know, and and we're sending them to more training.
That's great.
It's, we want to be able to be capable of turning around and not having to do this and make phone calls and and start guessing that. We don't like our officers guessing.
They wait sixty minutes to go in?
Well.
That won't happen.
That that won't happen here. And in fact, I have permission from the mayor that we're gonna drive a vehicle through the school.
That's right, that's a good thing.
Fifty thousand dollars, I told him to be the best fifty thousand dollars I ever bought.
Yeah.
If we get the Bearcat, that's gonna go through and not put a stretch on it.
Yeah, now the Bearcat will save our units, okay?
No, that's that's actually really great. When you guys do the active shooting training, active shooter training, um, would it be possible for the council to be
Yes.
a a part of it, to be involved? Because, I mean, the training I went through was awesome, we learned a lot.
I don't think it's a quorum issue on a training scenario.
I wouldn't think so.
No.
Okay.
It's a training.
Yeah, I I want to make sure.
Like a convention.
I don't want to put anybody in a bind, so.
No, but I mean, even, I mean, be some of the actors. I don't know, but it would be nice to that everybody could kind of see how that whole situation works and what to expect.
I I would value the help.
You can invite the press and they won't be there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the whole building needs to do it.
Yes.
The the one, the one thing we want to engage in, and while I was happy to hear that the the new superintendent and and the group of principals were, I say impressed by our department able to kind of pivot on something that happened while a miss of a of a training that we were doing or a meeting that we were doing, but we want the public to know exactly that we're capable of handling anything. I know we are. Educate the public.
Right.
So I'm with that and and inviting you allows us to educate the public through your districts.
Yes.
So absolutely, and and I I I encourage it.
Okay.
I I value it and I I want, I'd like you there and we're gonna invite the media too because we want more people to see.
Right, excellent, okay.
Even Mr. Swir. Good, anything further?
No, that's great.
Thank you, Chief. I know it was a long meeting and you had to sit there through the whole thing, but I appreciate it. I wanted you here because I thought that
But it was worth it.
valuable, you know, for us to all be able to go back and forth. I I'm not, thank you. I mean, my commitment is this city. I mean, it it's about keeping public safety is always first. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good, Mayor.
We're good, thank you, Chief.
No, 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 don't forget, you can't leave. He has to talk to tomorrow to me, yeah, right, okay.
Okay, uh, well then let's move on and close it out. Councilors' remarks? Councilman Mark I, I'll start with you.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out there that I contacted the state about, uh, Spanish Trail and Darby Lane where they intersect. We've been having several accidents right there. Um, so they're gonna conduct a traffic study, usually in the fall. They said they'll do it because while school's out, it's not accurate. So, um, you know, we'll see what their findings are and if they can do anything to better serve that area, because too many cars are in the ditches. I've heard about that, that they've done it before and.
We had requested it before and they said they weren't enough accidents.
Well, they're adding up lately. I don't know what, I guess cell phones have changed maybe, distracting folks. And I just wanted to let people know that you and I have talked about the Dassbit Trailer Park cooling and how you are talking about seeing what ways we can.
With the money that we have budgeted for drainage, a big portion's going to Jefferson Terrace the next phase that needs to bid out. As you see, if you go down Jefferson Terrace, they're moving the utility lines now for that project. But I've all, I've contracted Chandler. I'll be bringing a contract, uh, for him to study that.
Okay, very good.
And then in the two hundred thousand, we have ARPA dollars to do some canal cleaning. And, and Rick and I have talked to parish government about possibly partnering on some of that. Uh, Larry and I met, uh, last week on that and the, especially the Anne Street and the, everything at Emerald Oil. We're probably gonna partner to clean those. Um, but in the process of all of that, Chandler will be our engineer. So your project is right up there.
That M-ten we talked about.
And the M-ten that we really need to clean out, but, but you're, that's top of my list to get.
I just wanted people to know that you do know about it and you're aware. You went out there and everything, so that's that, but I'm done. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I actually don't have a comment. Well, it was nice, the kayak.
Yes, that was, that was a fun little event. Yep, and that's gonna be how they all gonna go. Thank you.
Lot of fun.
Thank you.
Missed the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Wishing the loss of, uh, Marty Tron, a good servant for Iberia Parish Council. Tallest family, deepest consolences in this whole city council again. We wish him the best of luck. And I'm back. Doctor Justin Pinton did me wonders on my own. Nine weeks of therapy, three times a week from Mr. Freew and the staff at Iberia Rehab Center. I'm a miracle. Got three or four more weeks to go, but it's something to watch, how you can get something back. I tell them, you're number five on my list of all time. All time when it can give you something back. And I thank them every time I go in there, so.
Okay.
I really am back and I appreciate being back and I thank y'all for all y'all prayers that we made it.
Good, Mr. Bruce, all right. Thank you.
I made, I made mine brief. Uh, everybody knows the state legislature concluded on Monday, um, getting all the reports back, me and the mayor. But it looked like the city fared pretty good. Uh, we're just putting the pieces together, but it looks like, uh, we, we did well. Of course, special session has been called today for redistricting on the state, so we're gonna get that ironed out as well on a state level. But, uh, look forward for some funding coming down from the state and I guess we'll have details pretty soon, huh?
I'm hoping. I need it in writing. I can get excited.
Oh, yeah.
I'd just like to invite everybody to, uh, a Juneteenth celebration. It's sponsored by Neighborhood Watch and, uh, the Iberia Parish chapter of the NAACP. It's gonna be at the Slime and Theater and, uh, six o'clock PM on, um, next Thursday, June sixteenth. At, um, and the theme is celebrating our past, moving into the future. And our mayor, Pro Tim, has agreed to come and bring greetings and tell us a little bit about moving into the future. And, um, our feature speaker is gonna be Mrs. Elaine P. Campbell. Who is, of course, a retired educator and journalist, Ebony Journal she, uh, published for a long time. And, uh, we're gonna honor her also and everybody's invited to attend and refreshments will be served. So hopefully we'll see you on Thursday, June sixteenth, six o'clock PM.
Okay, I, I have a couple of things. The first thing is, is that I wanna invite everybody to the Juneteenth parade. That's gonna be happening on June eighteenth and the parade is gonna go down Main Street and I think it's gonna go from eleven to twelve. There's also a festival in Bullany Plaza that's gonna be afterwards and it's from twelve to six. And so we're asking everybody to come out and, well, celebrate this holiday with us. It's the first time, it's a federal holiday. Um, and we hope that everybody in this city will come out and enjoy the festivities. The second thing is, is just, I wanna kinda just talk to the people of my district just quickly. Um, I know it's out, um, the last month, but, um, I did hear about a lot of the shootings that were going on in my district. And I want you guys to know that, you know, these things aren't going unnoticed. Uh, you know, when you watch this, uh, on TV, you will hear all the things that the chief said about what they're doing, how they're hiring officers and training people. To try and address these violent crimes that are happening in our community. And I know a lot of times you, when you hear about these things, you look to your council people. You really want us to step up, to say something, to do something. And we're trying. I mean, you know, our police department is doing everything they can. Um, but the fact is that we need parents to help us as well. You know, summer's here, school's out. We need you to know where your kids are. We need you to know what they're doing, who they're with, and we need you to make sure what your kids are carrying, you know? We don't want these kids walking around with guns. And I can tell you just from last week, um, I was talking to Councilman Lewis and he had some kids in his shop. And we asked them, you know, who carries guns and who don't? And we had some that say they don't carry a gun because they don't do anything wrong and they don't mess with anybody. They don't feel like they need a gun. And then we had some that said, I need a gun because it's crazy out here and I, you know, I need to be able to protect myself. And so parents, there's no reason to have a gun. These kids need to call the cops. And we don't need more guns on the street. And I know we all have a right to carry a gun, but we all have a right to go out there and exercise and we don't do that either. So let's not add guns to the list when you don't have to. Let's, you know, when we see something, say something. When we see something happen in our community, say something. I know the seniors are scared. When you, if I live on a street and there are shootings going on throughout the week or a major crime, I'm terrified, okay? And so I know how you guys feel, but we need your help to solve this problem. City government can't do it without you. So I'm, I'm, I'm begging all the people in my district and throughout the city to let's work together. Because this is an epidemic and it's not just in New Iberia. It's all over the country and I know you hear about it every single day. But I'm asking the people of New Iberia, let's work together to try and solve our problem. The city, we know that they're working with other, um, municipalities to try and solve the problem, but we have to work together here. We need the parents to help us. We gotta get these, we gotta give these kids something else to do other than walk around with guns. And with the summer coming now, you know, I'm hoping we have less crime than more crime. And the only way we can do that is with your help. So I'm asking, you scared to call, call me, I'll call. Just tell somebody, okay? Thank you.
Well said. Thank you.
Uh, I got one. Uh, I wasn't able to attend the kayak ceremony and do, do the work, but I wanna thank y'all, the mayor and everyone else that, uh, attended. And I saw Marlo, Deidre.
DeeDee, it was DeeDee, not me.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
And I was rolling.
There you go, Ricky.
Ricky got video, man.
We had a good time.
Well, I, I, I did.
Yeah, it was fun.
But, uh, I'm sorry, I did miss that, but, uh, I wanna thank everyone for their support. To have that there, it actually turned out very nice and I'm glad it's there, cleaned up the area. So thanks again. And that's it for tonight. I'm ready to go.
Yeah, been a long meeting. I don't have too many. Uh, school board member, former councilman, Raymond Shudu Lewis has a benefit. It's a Juneteenth banquet. It's at the old school in Laurville on June seventeenth, so I just wanted to remind people about it. Uh, it all goes to their foundation, which is doing really good work. They're actually funding our, helping to fund and to operate our teen court, which is giving kids a second chance, which is something that we need in this community. Um, so I wanted to report on that. I wanted to thank everybody involved in the, everybody for coming and everybody involved in putting the kayak dock, uh, little ribbon cutting ceremony together. It was a lot of fun. We had a band. We, uh, you know, good. We had a food truck. Uh, those things are gonna continue. We've kinda decided, uh, the council people that were there at the time, we're gonna do that for every one of these ARPA projects, for all of our big grant projects. I think the more you can celebrate the good news, the more you can get out there, what's happening in our community and educate people on things that they can do. That's gonna help us, you know, in the long run. And we need community support for these projects. And they, these projects are wonderful, but if the community doesn't utilize them, we don't win. You know, the win is, is that we have quality of life opportunities and new quality of life opportunities for our citizens, spread out through this whole town. And I think that it's happening, we're doing that, but I think that was a, a fun way to kinda promote that. So you can look for more of those. I thank everybody involved with that. And this has been a long meeting, so I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Move.